Planning Board is now in session. Good evening, everyone, on this beautiful summer night. First item on the agenda is a vote to appoint Public Works Planning Board member. Karina.
So the Planning Board has one seat on the Public Works Planning Board to fill. And Sue Boust, Ms. Susan Boust was the incumbent. She's expressed interest to remain in that position. And we did have Mr. John Wood, who was interested, but he withdrew his interest. I'd also like to point out, we received, I received an email today from Mr. Bill Boland regarding recommendation for Sue Boust. Would you like me to read that? Or it's sufficient, you saw this. You didn't get to see it, but...
We have that chair in the room. If he wants it to be read, we will. If not, we'll move on. We'll move on. I'll open it up to the board. Any questions or comments? Mr. Mills?
No comments, but thank you, Ms. Boust, for wanting to remain.
Mr. Stein?
No questions, and thank you, Sue.
Mrs. Latrell?
No questions.
Mrs. Houlihan?
No questions, and thank you, Sue.
And thank you. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we vote to appoint Sue Boust to the Public Works Planning as a board member. Well, as a planning board member, right?
Yep.
Public Works Planning Board, yep.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Any comments from the public? All in favor? Five to zero. Congratulations, and thank you. Next item, next item on the agenda is a public hearing, continued public hearing, 118 120 Turnpike Road, major site plan approval. This public hearing is continued from June 3rd, July 8th, July 22nd. I'll ask the town planner to give us the update while the proponent sets up.
Don, I believe that Andy has to express that he's invoking the Mullins' to public hearings.
Mr. Mills?
So, Mr. Chairman, I just want you and the rest of the board and the participants, or the proponents, as well as the public, know that I have listened to the last meeting on July 22nd. And I have filled out the Mullins' report and signed it so that I can participate in the hearings for both the site plan approval and the special permit lower impact development.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions on that? Karina?
Okay. For an update from the last Planning Board meeting, that was on July 22nd, the applicant requested an extension to this, to these public hearings this evening, which was granted on July 25th, a few days after the last Planning Board meeting. Connorstone Engineering submitted some supplemental information regarding a revised landscape plan and a lighting narrative, followed by a full submission of plans dated July 24th. This submission was supplied to Fussin O'Neill for review, our town consultant. It was distributed to the Planning Board members and to various town departments. We received an email from the fire department that they had no further comments from their original, no, from on July 25th. So they're good. We did receive information from Open Space Preservation Commission. I'd also like to hand out a letter that we received from Open Space this afternoon. Did everybody get a copy of that? Whoever didn't, in the email, just take one, pass it down, yeah. We also received, let's see, where am I? We received comments back from Fussin O'Neill this morning, and those were forwarded to the applicant and to the Planning Board for review. I believe it's considered their final review letter. It did not change much from the prior review comments from the last meeting. And I have drafted some conditions. I've handwritten them out, but not formally yet. So I do have those available if we want to review them. That's what I have.
Very good. Thank you. Did you, gentlemen, oh, welcome back.
Welcome.
Did you gentlemen want to add to that at all? Did you have any updates for us, for the board?
Mr. Chairman, board members, we did attend the Conservation Commission meeting. Just as an update, between this meeting and last meeting, we received approval there. And I believe, and we filed revised landscape plans and a full set of revised plans for this hearing.
I believe it would be helpful, maybe, if you could explain what happened with conservation and the open area.
Oh, well, we discussed with the Conservation Commission our donation of the approximately 6.4 acres of the remaining land. We had the same conversation with them that we had with you regarding we'll allow town council and our council to determine the best way to do it. It seems there's two options. One is a direct donation, and the second one is a conservation easement. And that can certainly be, you know, a condition of this, of this board's approval. I'm not an attorney, so I'm not sure which the best approach is for the town or for the ownership, but whatever works for both is, will happen.
Open it up to the board. Mrs. Houlihan?
Reviewing all the documents, I just want to say thank you. It's, it's nice to work with, with you both and to be able to see the, kind of the adoption of a lot of our new native plantings with using warm lights, with the donation of the land, which we certainly appreciate it. So, thank you. I have no comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Latrell?
Yes, thank you. I reiterate what Mrs. Houlihan said. This was a fun project to work on, and it was fun working with you two, and I'm very happy with the results. It's going to be a nice project. As far as whether a conservation restriction or a donation, I'm not sure. I'd be comfortable if it was donated to the care and control of the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
And that may save you some legal work doing up the documentation for a conservation restriction.
The preferred way to do it.
I'd be, I'd be happy with that. That has adequate protection for me.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Stein?
Yeah, I'll echo those comments. Thank you for working with the board and with the department. Great job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
No questions.
And Mr. Mills?
So just to add a little bit more color, Stephen, I know you, you came originally with one project, realized it wasn't going to fit, pulled that back, came back, and so you've been through this almost twice. So you've been a frequent flyer to these meetings, which is a good thing and a bad thing, I guess, but I appreciate the way you've approached the whole thing. You're always prepared, very detailed, and passionate about the projects, which is great, and Vito, great job. And I watched the tape, like I said earlier. I have no questions. Thank you.
So, over the years, there's been pieces of land that have gone into green space for the town. Some of them were actually turned over to the town of South Row as public land. Some were retained by the current owner, but with a restriction. And others were turned over to trusts, preservation trusts, for, as their ownership. And with each of those, they've been praised, but they've also, each of them have been condemned for whatever reasons. We've, we've heard from some town officials that say that the town doesn't need the extra liability to babysit more land. We've also, so I think what we need to do, as you said, have council, town council and your council be guided by the best way to go. And so, the, the approval period is, for the major site plan, is August 9th, and for the special permit is August 12th, but we don't meet again until August 26th. So we'll go over, we're going to go over these draft conditions. And normally, what we do is, if they're pretty smooth, the board, and if the board feels comfortable, the board will take, will close the public hearing and, and take a vote. With this major piece, or this somewhat significant piece of open information as to whether or not you will retain ownership, it'll go to a third party, or if the town will, will accept it, I, I think we need to leave the public hearing open until we get that resolved so that the public would have an opportunity to comment on what direction is recommended. So that would mean that we would have to continue the public hearing to the August 26th. Is that, is that okay?
That's perfectly fine.
So why don't we go over the, the draft conditions? And at this point, because they're draft, the town planner will usually type them up in the standard notice of decision letter, which is usually a half a dozen pages, and then send that to you and send that to town council. And sometimes it gets bounced back and forth, changing a few, a few words, or clarifying an understanding, deleting, so on. So that by the time we get to our next meeting, the continued public hearing, it's all, everyone's fine with it, and it makes it easy for the board to, to take the vote, close the public hearing, take the vote, and wish you luck.
Very good.
Karina?
All right, what I can do is, I'll just read through what I wrote, beginning with the ones that were referenced in Fussin O'Neill's review comments and your response comments from submission two, which included most of them there. I also have a list of waivers that will most likely have to be voted on. There's one, two, three, four. So just to give you an idea of what those will be, in accordance with Fussin O'Neill's response comments, number three, 174-10D, minimize cut and fill and tree removal. That's up to the discretion of the Planning Board to agree to what you had responded to. The second one is in reference to Fussin O'Neill's comment, number nine, 174-13D, 10-foot landscape buffer at rear property line. Again, I think Vito had explained last time, and also in the response letter, the reasons for that waiver, so those will have to be defined. But I believe the Planning Board at the last meeting on July 22nd were in consensus with that one as well. As well as Fussin O'Neill's comment, number 11, regarding the lid techniques, which specifically list the various techniques, and a waiver was requested, or is being requested for rain gardens, roof gardens, and rain barrels to not be required, which I believe the Planning Board also had a consensus on. And then the last was Section 3.66 of the lid, pre and post topo, topography of one foot contours. The plan shows two foot contours. I think it was, Fussin O'Neill had no problem reviewing the plans with that, and it was appropriate to have that contour interval. So those would be the four waivers that we would include.
Very good.
Do you want me to put the comments up on the screen from Fussin O'Neill so we can follow them? That would be helpful. Okay.
Mrs. Latrell?
On the, the first waiver on 174-10D-1A, the project should minimize the volume of cut and fill. I don't, I don't think that's really a waiver. I think that they just have to show that they've minimized that, and as Fussin O'Neill says, it appears that they've demonstrated reasonable conformance.
So...
Yeah, go ahead.
So the board would either agree with that or not?
Right.
Sounds like we agree with it.
I, I do.
Okay, so, because it said at the discretion of the Planning Board to determine conformance, so, yeah, so we won't need that one. I'm trying to just find your response letter, Vito, from the 22nd.
Do you have it?
I think everything's in the Fussin O'Neill one, too. They put ours in there.
Yeah, but it doesn't have the one with all the conditions that I'm going to read. It's the one that has all the, I have it right here. I just have to, I just have to get to it, see if I can find it here. Just bear with me one second. Here we go. This was your, this, on the screen represents the response letter from Connorstone with the majority of the comments that Fussin O'Neill had and that you responded to. So I just wanted to put this up on the screen so we can go to the sections as we, as I read the comments. Okay. We're off to slow start, but it'll speed up. Give me one second. I have them all here. Okay, Fussin O'Neill's comment, number seven, in regards to revised lighting and photometric plan to show two light fixtures, B1 and BW, in proper location, and that they don't impact the photometric plan. Because I don't think the new plan you submitted moved those over. Is that something that got forgotten?
Right, no, but Fussin O'Neill had indicated no further review is required, that they don't impact conformance with zoning.
Mm-hmm. But the plan should show the right location, right? Because I think you said they were shifted on the plan.
Yeah, we could shift them over.
Yeah, that's all. That's just a reminder. So the condition will be there until...
That sounds right, yeah.
We, you fix the plan. Okay. The second condition, number 12, the Fussin O'Neill comments, had to do with, "Prior to commencement of any land disturbing activity, applicant shall record special permit with registered deeds with written proof prior to construction." That's for the special permit for lid. Typically required to be recorded. Fussin O'Neill's comment, number 13, referred to, "At the completion of the project, owner shall submit as-built record drawings of all structural stormwater controls and treatment BMPs, best management practices, showing deviations from approved plans certified by PE in Massachusetts." So techni, you know, basically the as-built.
That's good.
Next condition was a final O&M stamped by professional engineer and signed by the owner. Usually, we just have the unsigned version, so we'll probably need one of those. The stormwater pollution prevention plan, a final copy of that. So the conditional read will require that prior to probably construction. Okay? The next condition is, we need an updated stormwater report to include any calculations or additions that you referenced in the comments. So where you explained it in the comments, we just want to make sure that that's in the final stormwater report. So any of those change, and I have them listed if you need them. There's not that many. I think there's one, two, three, four areas where you updated treatment and some drawdown calculations, such like that.
Yeah, so we just have one final copy.
And then, another, and if these are addressed, then the conditions don't have to be included. That's just at this point in time, so. We'd need an updated impact development statement to include any revisions. In the Fussin O'Neill comments, there were two items that said you need to show percentages and acreage. So if we don't have that updated copy, I just need that for the record. So that's a condition. Another condition, applicant owner shall provide a copy of the board of health approval of the oil, gas separator, and tight tank prior to start of construction. That references Fussin O'Neill's comment, number 28. Right here up on the screen, number 28. Next item, prior to construction, provide architectural elevations confirming fire apparatus clearance meets 13 feet 6 inches per fire department comments from May 23rd. So I think, I think somewhere in, in, as I go forward, it says, "Those architectural elevations have to be provided prior to construction," something like that, so that the fire department knows it clears.
You can review them.
Yeah. Then we move to comments from the lighting narrative, and that said, "Light fixtures, interior and exterior shall be no greater than 3,000 Kelvin color temperature to reduce blue light."
Mm-hmm.
And these are not on the Fussin O'Neill comments anymore. And the Planning Board, you can look at this letter from Troika, which listed those five items. And I can put them here on the screen. And here they are. So some, like, the first item there isn't really a condition. That was just explaining what your situation is. So the next condition would be, and I can check with the Planning Board, these other can, items that are listed on that letter, do you want those included as conditions? Or, I thought that was better than just referencing the letter, if we put them in the, in the conditions verbatim. That's a yes?
Mr. Stein?
So, I was, I believe, at the previous meeting, I was asking about more specific hours of operation.
Mm-hmm.
Those had, has that been clarified, or is it still approximate?
Well, what we've said in that memo is that the garage will be closed by 8:00 PM every day.
Okay, so that would be...
And so we, that can be included if you want, want to do that, that's fine, in the conditions.
I would prefer it.
Okay, that's perfectly good.
So I'll just read these real quickly for public consumption. At the roof level, lighting will be pole-mounted. Full cutoff fixtures will be at 15 feet above the parking surface. Interior light fixtures will be surface-mounted to underside of floor above, and this is for the parking garage. A lighting control system will provide and control all of the fixtures on the building. Interior lights will be tied to motion sensors, which will turn them on when they sense activity and then shut them off after a set period of time. Exterior pole-mounted fixtures should be connected to a time clock or shall be connected to a time clock. These fixtures shall be timed to shut off in correlation with operating hours of the building, approximately 8 to 9:00 PM. The hours of operation for the office building at 120 Turnpike Road will be 8:00 AM until 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM noon on Saturdays. The parking garage will be open and accessible during building hours. We, they propose closing the garage at 8:00 PM each day. So that language will be tweaked a little bit. It will define the hours, but, you know, some of that's not, we can't tell you, you know, you have to be accessible during building, you know. All right, Karina? So basically, what was written in that will just be put in there?
That's fine. That's good.
Okay. Then we have some standard-type conditions that we typically put in, and I'll try to read them really quick, because we should be able to get through these pretty good. Except for specific waivers granted, the applicant shall comply with all provisions of the general bylaws, zoning bylaws, and all rules and regs, applications thereto. The applicant shall timely pay all fees of the town of South Row imposed generally for... construction projects and for the purpose of monitoring compliance of the construction and occupancy of the project in accordance with site plan approval unless expressly waived in this decision." So although we don't have a formal process for review, for having inspections on site plans, I know that the planning board is working towards developing a process to handle that. So if that should come up, then we would ask, like we do of anyone, inspection fees to cover that.
That's fine.
"Allowed lighting for the project shall be shown on and installed in accordance with the approved plans and as per the electrical photometric plans submitted with the applications." There'll also be reference to the 3,000-degree Kelvin maximum temperature for reduced blue light. So I'll tie those two together.
Correct.
"The planning board shall be notified upon completion of the site lighting installation. After said notification, the planning board shall have one year to review illumination. During this review period, the planning board reserves the right to require adjustment of the number and/or intensity of exterior fixtures. If it determines illumination is insufficient or spill over onto adjacent property is excessive. This is subject to the understanding that lighting levels will not be below standard safety requirements. Nighttime lighting shall be minimized to the extent possible based upon tenant usage of the property and standard safety requirements." Standard. Number four, we have, "Landscaping shall be in conformance with the approved plans as submitted by the applicant to the planning board except as otherwise provided in these conditions. Such landscaping shall be maintained, repaired, or replaced by the owner as needed to maintain compliance with such plans." And added to that will be some specific language about the native species that are proposed, which I'll... I can probably go into more detail when we talk offline. I think it was everything that you agreed to. And as a matter of fact, Open Space Preservation submitted a letter today thanking you and your engineer on the good job addressing their requests. So there might be just some fine-tuned language in there about any substitutions will be... need to be approved by not only the landscape architect but by the town planner, so that I can vet them and make sure the board is happy with what's changing. Okay. All right. "At least 14 days before the start of construction, the applicant shall provide written notice to the planning board of the anticipated construction start date and construction schedule." Standard condition. "Prior to construction, the applicant shall provide in writing the name of the person who is responsible for site disturbing activity to the town planner and building commissioner." Let's see here. "The special permit for lower impact development shall be recorded. The worst registered deed written proof to the planning board." I think I already said that one. "Proof of all required permits shall be submitted to the planning department prior to start of construction. Copy of fully executed stormwater O&M plan, operation maintenance, and agreement stand by professional engineer registered in Mass must be filed with the planning board prior to construction. After construction is completed, as-built plans shall be submitted to the planning department, Department of Public Works, Building Department, Board of Health. Standby PE, I believe, will also require AutoCAD plans at the end." All right, let me just make sure. I think I got everything. Let me just make sure here. Sorry. Okay, just back to the landscaping. Some of those items will be about mowing and maintenance and how often, things like that. No invasives will be allowed to be established, et cetera. "All utilities serving the project shall be installed underground, including any extension from existing lines or poles external to the property." I believe that's a standard one. We usually also have that, "All existing overhead utilities and poles located on the project property shall be removed and replaced." So I don't know if that impacts you or not.
Yeah, you have overhead, don't you?
And the board may just apply that one.
I can't remember. I don't know that we...
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Board, I'm not sure we have overhead or not. I don't think we do. We wouldn't have intended to put those underground, but I don't think we do. We can... We can easily respond to that before the next meeting. Does that... Will that work?
Again, that's a standard one that we have in there that usually comes out during the meeting, but for some reason didn't come up. "Three sets of final approved plans shall be submitted to the planning department along with electronic PDF files and AutoCAD files for the project at least one week prior to construction." And I did check with the DPW, and they're still... They still wanted to get the AutoCAD files, because we're working on our GIS system and all that, so. I do have a condition here that says, "Prior to building department application, a description of hours of operation and facility access shall be provided to the planning department and public safety departments." I believe that was for a storage facility, so maybe the hours of operation are already defined in the lighting narrative.
I want to go over that in a few minutes.
Okay. "Prior to start of construction, the major site plan approval decision shall be recorded with written proof..." With recording... Recorded proof to the planning board. "Pre-construction meeting with the planning department shall be held prior to any construction activity." And I think that's about it.
Let's go to the hours of operation. Mr. Stein just asked that a little while ago, and your response was?
The building is open 7 to 8:00.
7:00.
Saturday is 8 to 12:00.
7:00 a.m.
To 8:00 p.m.
To 8:00 p.m.
And so we'll close the ramp at 8:00 p.m., so it'll fit with the building hours.
Okay. It's a good thing, because the neighbors can comment on that tonight and anytime during the public hearing if they don't like those hours of operation for some, you know, significant reason. That would open it up to a discussion.
Sure.
Flip side is, if you have a tenant that wants to start at 6:30 and have their people on site under the meat of the rush hour, you'd have to come in for modification to that condition.
Well, they could park in the surface area of the lot.
But you said the hours of operation of the building was 7:00 a.m.
Yeah.
So if somebody wanted... If a tenant wanted to start at 6:30 a.m.
They have card key access. The official hours are 7:00, so, you know, you're not responsible for heat or air conditioning or things until that period of time. But they have... Tenants have card key access, frankly, 24 hours. But the ramp would be... Have only access during the official building hours.
So our approval should reflect what Mr. Cox just said, that the board and the public has been informed now that it's possible that there would be cars coming there any time of the day or night. The majority of them would be between that, the 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. And I guess if you had a tenant that was going to have several hundred car trips rolling in there at midnight, that's a little bit beyond what we're talking about tonight.
If that was going to be the case, we'd come back here. We have no problem with that.
Okay. But it is understood that the building may not be in darkness all night long. There may be people in there.
In the building itself, the office building, yes.
Yeah, okay. That seems to be more common these days than...
It is quite common, yeah.
Not that long ago.
Right.
Okay. Was there anything else, Karina?
The only other one was a condition on the conservation... The approach to the open area. And I believe at the beginning, it was going to be worked out before the next meeting, so we can define a condition to put in. That's really the only real specific one.
Anything else from the board? Anyone from the public? Questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. And I don't need to read our letter. I'm sorry I didn't get in the packet, but I think you all had a chance to look at it or will later. I just want to publicly thank Mr. Cox and Vito and the planning board. I think the end result of this project is above and beyond anyone's expectation from what we envisioned when they first came in with a parking lot. And they've met, as far as I can tell, for the Open Space Preservation Commission, all of our, you know, recommendations. And not only that, we're very, very easy to work with. And Vito and I had a bunch of back and forths, and I can't... I can say that everything I sent him is on this plan. So I don't know when that happens. And the planning board themselves were pushing a little bit back against a landscape architect that might have been misinformed about what you can and can't do with native species. I think that's a real learning, because we had an applicant who was willing to go the distance. And now we have a great plan because of the planning board's recommendations to them and their follow-through. So, thank you. And the only final thing I would say is that the Open Space Preservation Commission and the Stewardship Committee for Breakneck Hill Conservation Land have both at meetings, both committees, the committee and commission, independently taken votes to recommend that the added land be given to the town under the care of the control of the Conservation Commission. It's the cleanest way to handle it. It also abuts land that we were given... The town was given from Capital Group on another project. And it's not like a small parcel of land out in the middle of nowhere. It's a 90-acre parcel that this would be added to with a committee that's charged with oversight of the stewardship board. And it just makes, you know, if the applicant... The project proponent is willing to gift it, it's the cleanest way. We're two years into trying to get a CR done, and I can't tell you how much legal time that probably involved. So, thank you. And thank you again. It was wonderful working with you.
Thank you for your help.
Any other questions or comments? So we're at the point where you would request that the approval period be extended beyond our next planned... Planning board meeting, which is on August 26. Normally, we extend the approval period to the Friday after that Monday, which would be August 30. Is that your request?
Yes, we request the extension to August 30.
Mr. Mills.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we extend the approval period for 118-120 Turnpike Road, major site plan approval, and also for the lower impact development for 118-120 Turnpike Road to August 30.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, we've extended the approval period. Mr. Mills.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue the public hearing for major site plan approval for 118-120 Turnpike Road to August 26 at 7:00 p.m. And also that we continue the public hearing for 118-120 Turnpike Road lower impact development for 7:05 on August 26, 2019.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? We'll see you on the 26th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to you working with the town planner between now and then. Do you have to sign this, Mr. Cox? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for 40 and 42 Central Street, Fable Hall, major site plan approval. And same address, special permit, adaptive reuse of historic buildings, public hearing. These public hearings were continued from July 22, and I will ask the town planner to give us the update. Mr. Mills.
So in accordance to, you know, procedure, since I wasn't here at the last meeting, I have filled out the moment's report. I did listen to the tape and watch the video from the last meeting for this, so I can participate. This was the only hearing that I missed, so I filled out the paperwork.
To bring you up to speed from the last planning board meeting... Let me just shut this down. All right, at the last planning board meeting, the public hearings were continued to this evening. We received review comments from the fire department, which were submitted to Fussin O'Neal, the applicant, and to the planning board members for review on August 1st. Mr. Bemis from Engineering Design Consultants provided submission number two, which was plans dated 7/29/19, and updated stormwater report. The plans and submission came in very close, within seven days of tonight's planning board public hearings. So we did get them posted on the website Friday and this morning. They were distributed to the planning board this evening in today's packet, because they were so close to the timeframe. And we do require seven days, at least seven days minimum, for the submission to come in before a public hearing, so that not only the planning board, but the public has access to look at the plans and the comments and such. We did distribute the information to the town departments as well earlier this morning. And I did talk with Mr. Bemis about it would be up to the planning board to allow presentation and receive comments and information based on them just having received the information. So it would be the planning board's call.
Very good, thank you. Is it the board's desire to do nothing and continue the hearing based on the lateness of the material submitted, or to allow presentation and no comments, or allow presentation and comments and questions from us and the public? What's our preference?
My opinion, in the interest of moving things along, would be to listen and allow questions and comments. But I would reiterate that this board takes a lot of heat for how long it takes. And this is what happens. The initial meeting, the package was incomplete. We needed more information. This meeting, we didn't get the information until late Thursday, which doesn't allow a lot of time for this board to review it, nor does it allow time for our consultant to review it and get back. So that should be taken into account when people are leaning on us, saying we take a long time.
Anyone else?
I agree with Meeby.
I'm fine. I just wanted a clarifying question. What was submitted? Was a photometric plan submitted, or just what I have in front of me?
I haven't had a chance to fully look through the plans, but I believe one of the sheets, I saw foot candles on the site plan.
Okay, I must have missed.
So, I, Peter, right, there's a photometric plan in there?
Chris?
And I also want to just comment that Fussin O'Neil is still reviewing this submission, having received it at the end of last week as well, or middle week to end of week. So, they're, we're waiting on their comments and they expressed that they would get them ASAP as well, but we don't have them yet.
Mrs. Stine?
I think that the fact that this Board is willing to allow us to proceed this way is a real gesture of support and cooperation for the project. And I hope that the proponent understands and appreciates that.
Yeah, we very much appreciate it. As I said at the last meeting, we got the comments from Fussin O'Neil the same night as the meeting. So, we, we were forced into a situation where we were trying to catch up too. So, we're all trying to get to the same place. Thank you for the opportunity to present this this evening.
All set, Mr. Mills? I agree. Could you introduce yourself, Peter and John?
Yeah, so, Peter Bemis, Engineering Design Consultants, and I'm gonna let John make some opening statements. Why don't you go ahead, John?
Good evening, welcome back.
Good evening. Is this, this is, it sounds like it's on. I'm John Deli Frascoli, the proponent. For those of you not familiar with the project, or for the benefit of the public at home and the audience here tonight, we responded to an RFP dealing with the Fayetteville Hall. We followed the RFP, we were awarded the RFP, subject to being able to get to the other side, which is working through all the different boards and permitting authorities that we've been doing and working diligently to get there. So, that's what we're doing. I have no preconceived, just to clear the air, no pre, I'm not leaning on any board for anything, I'm just trying to get through the other side. So, I just want you to know that, that we want to work together, get through the questions as best we can. I think we're doing what we're presenting tonight and what we presented the prior meeting. Shows a very thoughtful restoration of Fayetteville Hall and its true nineteen-eleven character. There really is not a lot of options for this property on the preservation side, we've really worked hard to address that. And I think we've done a good job on that. And we're here to answer any questions and follow up with any of your comments from last time and hopefully we can clear up a lot of those points to your satisfaction. And that's what we'd like to do. And I'm certainly willing to answer any questions about anything on anything I'm doing in town. So, there you are.
Okay, great. So, again, Peter Bemis, Engineering Design Consultants. So, the drawing has the revision in the lower left-hand corner, so that's the plans you received today from your packet. And, and in it, we've done our best to address all of the open comments that Fussin O'Neil provided. And in our response letter, we have a section where we just take Fussin O'Neil's comment and then we address it in red. So, you should have a red line letter in your packet that takes items, each individual item that they had provided, and we have a response for everyone. So, there was a request for traffic information. That, we couldn't get together for this packet that you have. We also addressed in the letter saying that we would give it to you under separate cover. I'd hope to bring it this evening, I'm still waiting for some comments back from the traffic engineer. You will get something on our lead ahead with that outlining some traffic information for the, for the site and its for its use. This property is zone residential B, as all the properties are on Central Street in this area until you get up to Route nine. So, we also identified that on the plan, they put a small zoning table on the plan. And the abutting properties are also identified in the plan with the property across the street being town-owned property in the park. So, that's been done. So, some dimensional requests were made by Fuss, some labeling on, the now or formerly's have been, been added to the plan. And, and then dimensions for sidewalks, walkways and whatnot. Probably the more important feature was that when we looked closely at the Fayetteville Hall plan, there was a fountain in front of the building. John very much is hopeful that he can find a fountain to match that picture. I don't have a detail for it, I just called out a fountain. I think you can, you've seen from the other projects that John does, he doesn't do anything halfway, he usually goes all the way. So, I'm convinced that he'll find a fountain that matches that picture. If you remember the historic picture I had there, it's, it's one of those public-type fountains. John did find two light fixtures that he has at his Ediville Railroad Project, and those are nineteen-ten, nineteen-twenty light fixtures. I put a picture of that, because he gave me the picture. So, those are the two lights that are gonna go in front of the building, as they might have in nineteen-ten, when this building was built. We did call out for the trees to be removed, that's an important aspect to John's proposal. And then we did propose to plant, he specifically wanted to put a hornbeam on that side, again, a tree that's in keeping with what he's been doing over there at, at the Garfield Home as well, at Deerfoot Road. All the other trees had been labeled before, but they were just labeled generically, so we've put sugar maple down for those, that's also on the plan. And I believe there were just a couple of, again, dimensional items. The sign was just using a small colonial-style board fence, excuse me, board with a, with a single post-type sign for the facility, fairly small, just having some hours of operation. The second sheet does have the photometric, lower left. The lighting details, we're showing a, again, traditional lantern-type fixture for the building-mounted fixtures that will be on there. This is for the under-entry area and in the parking lot. This would come off of a, a post-light. So, this is a larger lantern for those pole locations that are shown here. There were just, again, a couple of other items that Fussin O'Neil had had about some details and some areas. One pertained to the stormwater calculations that we provided. We had done a peer review with Fussin O'Neil through Conservation. And when we first started the project, John had, was trying to keep the project very much in keeping with, with nineteen-ten by having a gravel parking lot there. We abandoned that at one point where we just could not solve the stormwater treatment components for the project. So, we have a traditional paved parking lot here and the calculations were updated in March. The packet that we submitted with the application was the original Calc's package. So, in your new package, you also have a copy of the new Calc, the newer Calc.
Question, the stormwater management report that you submitted, that was the one that is approved by Conservation?
Yes, and Fussin O'Neil signed off on it. So, the one you got, and that, the four, the four copies that you got on Thursday?
Nated March twentieth.
Right, those are the right ones. So, the other thing that you had asked for was the backup for the interaction with the Selectmen's Office. So, I did provide you with a complete copy of John's proposal to the Board of Selectmen with the accompanying letters of support from the various boards. You all, you already had the Historic Commission's vote in support of the project as we had initially submitted it. And then, as I said in the original application, we will give you a formal list of waivers. I would anticipate that after tonight's meeting, we would have vetted most of the issues on the site plan and then we will give you a formal letter request. So, the parking spaces are shown as nine by eighteen, there will be a formal request for that. The number of parking spaces exceeds the use requirement for this site, but we would also ask for a waiver to be able to do that. This parking lot has a dual purpose, it's gonna serve John's needs for his proposal, but it also does afford parking for the use of the town park across the street. And I did, I did add a little bit of information regarding traffic and parking in the note as well, but we're gonna give you a formal package for traffic as well. So, that, that's pretty much it, that's what this packet is. The architecturals are no different, we did give you a full set yet again, but they are the same plans that you got the first time. So, there was continuity in the set.
There's one other follow-up too, Peter, that, yeah.
Yeah, good job.
Mrs. Luttrell, I think you asked me about the zoning and the legality of, of this proposal. And our lawyer sent a letter in regarding that and went to Aldo and spoke with Aldo and all within keeping of what the intent of the bylaw and overlay and everything else that was done for this historic reuse, adaptive reuse. And that letter was submitted, I believe you have that? From, from Dave Pitney? It was, it's addressed to Donald Morris, Chairman. It's addressed, it's August one.
Of two thousand?
Nineteen.
I do not have that letter.
Okay, well.
I do have a letter from April twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, where the Planning Department requested Town Council opine on the idea of a municipal building becoming a resident, another use in a residential zone under the adaptive reuse, historic bylaw. So, that was included in the packets for the Planning Board, but I, we've not received that letter.
Well, this is a follow-up letter, I, I don't know why it wasn't received, but I'll, I have three copies, I don't know if you'd like me to submit them or what you'd like me to do. According to here, it was sent to you. It says, the CCs on this are...
Sent to me via email?
It went to, obviously, me, Aldo Cipriano, Mark Purple and Peter Bemis, and it was addressed to the Chairman, Attention, Karina Quinn.
I, and it was August first?
First, yep. And I checked with Bill and he said it was confirmed that you got it, so, I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm the middleman.
Checked with whom, Bill, with?
The lawyer, William Pizzoni.
Oh, Bill?
Yeah.
Oh, funny, I know, I ran into him the other day, but he didn't mention it. I haven't gotten an email and I didn't get a hard copy. Maybe you can submit it...
We'll, we'll provide that.
All the copies and then I need a, an email of it as well.
I'll do that.
That's all, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't...
That's okay.
I will say that he does, in his letter, it does say Faneuil Hall, Historic Faneuil Hall, so just to say that we, he didn't mean that. I'm sure someone transposed, I'm sure someone transposed the letter for him and, and then he didn't check.
I guess the bottom line of the letter is, is that what we're doing is allowed, I mean...
Right, that's what Bill's conclusion is in the letter.
That's the bottom line, but this, this is how you get there.
And I trust the letter that you have, Karina, because I'd probably like to have that too from my files, does confirm the same thing. We wouldn't have gotten this far if it, if it didn't, that's my firm belief.
But I did, I did, I mean, when you brought it up, I'm just looking, I, I wanted to make sure I addressed it, so...
I think the gist of the letter that I received in two thousand seventeen when we were working on the bylaw, said the principal concern appears to be the status of commercial municipal buildings and subsequent types of reuse. So, if, if town...
That was long before I was involved.
Yeah. So, we can coordinate, we'll give you our letter, you give us yours.
Yeah, sure.
Bill, Bill did mention that Aldo, I'm not speaking for Aldo, but it appeared that he was in agreement and would, extent, is gonna reach out to you to tell you that. But that's between you and the Town Council and I'm not gonna speak for any third parties, but...
Okay, I'm sorry, I keep up to date on my email?
I just, I just took it very seriously, because I put a lot of effort into this thing and, and I, you know, and I wouldn't have even got to this point if, if what's being proposed is not something that was in the wheelhouse of what the original intent of this whole reuse was, was to find a way to save these old buildings and make them practical for today's purposes.
Hopefully, you wouldn't have gotten this far if it wasn't, you know, if your proposal was accepted, it must have been, it would appear to be...
Right, I mean, what I, what was in that RFP and what we supplied you tonight, I don't know if you've ever seen it, but what Peter gave you is exactly what the, what was read through by the Selectmen and the Town Council and the Town Manager and everything else and was deemed appropriate. And by the Historical Commission, who I think had a big hand in the original adaptive reuse concepts. So, you know, it's really up to the town to decide how they wanna, you know, proceed on that.
And just to clarify, that letter is supposed to come to me from Bill Pizzoni, Attorney Pizzoni, or from Town Council?
Well, we were, you, you would, you would, you had asked me to respond to that and, and I, I can't go to Town Council. I have to go to my attorney, who then copied Town Council. They, they, I believe they spoke with each other and discussed it and were in agreement and the letter was sent. That's all I know and then I think Town Council would certainly back that up, since they backed up the RFP, which is exactly what's in front of you tonight.
I'm just asking to know what I'm looking for, so I...
I don't know, I don't know all the, I don't know the timing and, and I don't have all those records, I just, I was a little shocked that you don't have the letter.
So, we put, to bring it, we put the, we put the zoning on the plan, because it is res B, and, and then the, the adaptive reuse does recognize that municipal properties are gonna be in different zones. And that the use category may not be allowed use in res B, but because it's a historic reuse of a property, it does get an exemption that's in there through, through a permit from the Planning Board. And that's basically what Bill Pizzoni's letter outlines.
Well, it looks like I supposedly got it, but I, I just, August first was...
Well, it's a while ago now.
Yeah, yeah, I'm surprised, I...
Okay.
It was Thursday, at what time? Four fifty-five PM?
I had spoke with Bill earlier on Thursday, because I was traveling and I knew that the letter was being sent.
I was out, I, I, I was out of town, I, I, it was my birthday this weekend, so I went away.
I'll find it, if you send it to me and I have it, I'll certainly...
Up to main.
Okay.
I just...
But we'll get you the number of copies that you need to fulfill the distribution. So, the, the last piece that I had had was that, again, the request was for a full-size copy of the soil absorption plan that was approved by the, by the Board of Health and we've provided you with that as well. We did show it on the site plan, we showed all the appearances, but this is the, the separate standalone plan for that. And you have that now as well. So, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you might have, thank you.
The two streetlights, by the way, that Peter's mentioning, the antique ones, those actually came from the city of Baltimore and they're actually cast on there nineteen oh nine, right on the castings. I bought a whole truckload of, I don't know why they pulled them out, but they did.
So, I think I'm gonna go first, because I'll forget. You said earlier that there's more parking spaces than required. How many more?
We did a table, so, um, the heck did he put it? We have thirty-two parking spaces and I believe if we looked at the use, it was fifteen, that's in my...
So, why do we have so many?
Well, I think from a practical standpoint, the, the day-to-day parking is, is not gonna be impactful at all. But there will be periodic auctions there which could increase the parking, we wanted to make sure that we would have the ample parking on the site. And also that, you know, there's some street parking, but we also have an arrangement that was part of this that we made with the town already on some cross-parking for the folks that are using the playground, because they currently use the lot right now. But that's already in the arrangement with the Selectmen, that, or the authority that handled the RFP, the disposal authority. I have, I think that's the Selectmen. And we made reference in the RFP that we would, you know, we would do that and, and that's, and that's in there. But I think extra parking, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, is gonna be needed during periods of, you know, of auctions. But on a day-to-day basis of the gallery and all that, I don't see that as a, you know, I think there'll be enough parking there for...
And more importantly, we wouldn't want any overflow parking to affect our neighbor to the east, to people parking on Grove Street, we wouldn't want that either. So, I think by making sure we have enough parking on site is the most prudent way to address the, the use.
So, when I saw the plan, even without looking, it was just, my memory was saying that there's something in our code that requires plantings within big parking lots. And, and looking at this parking lot, it's like three times, four times the size of the building. So, I'm looking at one seventy-four dash thirteen in the code, town code, which is landscaping. And shade trees, this is one seventy-four thirteen, B, paragraph D, shade trees must be a minimum of three inches in caliper, six inches above grade, B of a species common, that's one section. But the, the, the thing that was in my head from past site plans was in section BI. in my head from past site plans was in section, uh, BI. No, below that, next paragraph after that, which is not numbered. Says planting shall consist of at least one tree per forty linear feet of planting area length. Except one tree per twenty linear feet of street planting. Uh, area budding root nine. So that doesn't, doesn't account for. I know that when we do site plans all over town, we use the forty feet. That there should be a tree planted, uh, within a big parking lot. And you would, you're not supposed to be able to go forty feet without encountering a tree. So... I know we had the discussion about the landscaping and I thought, I felt that your response to the landscaping for this site was highly appropriate. That the landscaping requirements now in two thousand nineteen, wouldn't properly, uh, uh, reflect the historic landscaping from over a hundred years ago. So if the land, if the proper landscaping is grass and a few trees, then, then that's, that's what it should be, in my opinion. But there weren't big parking lots like this back in nineteen ten. So what I'm asking is if you took one of these parking spaces in the middle of the lot, probably one that's closest, closer to Central Street than the one deep, than the, the row deeper into the lot. If you took one of those, uh, one of those and turned it into an island, right in the middle. So it'd be like the sixth or the seventh parking space in from, uh, the left as we're, as we're looking at the plan. If you lost that one parking space and turned that into a, just an island, then it wouldn't have to be, uh, the eighteen feet. So that, but it wouldn't be anymore, so that the park, the space on the other side of the aisle would still be able to back out. It would be, if there was a tree there, it wouldn't be any different than if there was a car there. Probably be, uh, actually a little bit more room. So what I'm asking is, and, and in the afternoons, you know, the sun, that would create a shade spot in the middle of the parking lot. So I'd ask you to consider losing one of those spaces and planting a tree there, a shade tree. In addition to what you have along the street.
So how about this? How about we add a couple of additional trees adjacent to the parking lot, but not in the parking lot? Which we could create shade on the parking lot. And, and I'd rather than to one tree, I'll put two additional maple trees or evergreens, whatever your preference is. And, um, to be able to cast shade. I'd rather keep the parking field open for ease of maintenance and, and for people and everything. These little islands tend to end up getting hammered with, uh, with plows and people driving on them, curbing their cars and everything else. It's, it is, you, you mentioned that the, the parking lot is larger than the building. Well, the building's only twenty-two hundred square foot footprint, or approximately. It's not a huge building to begin with. I, I, I would prefer that, if you could live with that. I'd give you extra trees there if, if that's what you want, uh, to give a, cast a little bit more on it. I don't have a problem with that. I'd just rather not chew up the parking after we've gone through, you know, it just, you know, we're providing the proper handicap. That's not there now. We're providing a lot of, what I would call structured green space, that's not there now. The parking lot's not even usable the way it is now. There's a pothole there that would swallow a car. You know, there's, there's, you know, it's so vastly superior to what's there now. But I'd be, I, I, but I'll, but to address your comment, I'd be willing to add two trees and a location of your, of your choice, other than in the asphalt. Could be adjacent to the asphalt, but just not in the asphalt.
What I might suggest on, if I could, is just, if we take it and we were to zigzag the trees, because that, that would be the more effective way to do it. So we'd keep the, the ones lining up along the street, because I think that's important. But then take the others back up towards the parking lot itself. So I'd be putting it right behind the space here, here, and I might squeeze John for one more tree so that it would look proper and I'd have one, two, and three. And then that would give you more depth of field for the, for the vegetation. It would give us, you know, something to grow over time to be pretty significant. You'd have a crown of trees pretty much coming along the entire street front. So rather than soldiering them, soldiering them, have two rows of them.
I must say that your response is highly consistent with responses we've received over the years. Similar to these, uh, parking lots where the, you know, the owner doesn't wanna have the islands for the ease of plowing and maintaining the curbs and stuff like that. The flip side of that, though, is that we're trying to, and the reason for this in the code is to not have these huge seas of asphalt. And the way you break 'em up is with these, with these islands.
It's not a large park lot.
So, um... What I'd like to say, I put this in the form of a request and I appreciate your response. But, um, I'm not a, personally not, um... Not able to say that that's okay, uh, what you're proposing. So we'll see what the, the board members and the neighbors may have to say about it. I might be the only one that's, uh, pushing for that. But, um, and also give you an opportunity to, um, sleep on it.
Okay.
There was one plan that I looked at and I, I don't expect to spend time looking for it, but I thought I saw a plan that showed that heavy dark line, I, I think it's the property line. And it's the, the, the line that goes, uh, pretty much parallel with the back of the Fayetteville AA building. Yes. I thought I saw a plan someplace where that line was not as parallel at all with the back of the building. It actually almost went to the, uh, northeast corner of the building. It's, it, it, uh, kinda popped out that it looked like the property line, that the building, the Fayetteville AA building was actually almost touching the back property line. So if you, uh, maybe I'll find it and then through Karina, I can show it to you. But it was inconsistent with these other drawings that we saw.
We, we did a, a full boundary survey here. We've tied in, uh, we've got real good control at this location. So I'm confident of the boundary that's being represented on the plan.
And then we have the issue of the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, landing at the bottom of the ramp actually being on, on the Grove Street public way. And I think, Karina, did you talk about that earlier as far as that being discussed?
I sent an email to DPW, Karen Galligan, asking her, um, her opinion and feedback on this situation. Because it is an existing building and the current stairs are in the right-of-way for Grove Street as it appears on the plan. So I asked her, um, you know, what's the process? Because it's not that you're just using that, but you're also expanding with the handicap ramp around the corner. So you're further encroaching. She said, you know, I asked her whether it, it goes to the Board of Selectmen for some kind of license if you're doing or having something on town right-of-way that's gonna stay there. And she said that, um, she'd spoken with Mark Purple and they were, um, speaking with town council to see what would have to be done to make sure that's remedied in some legal fashion. So that when it transfers ownership to you, that there's no, um, confusion for the future if somebody should consult. It would protect you and protect the town either way. So it's pending with, um, Mark Purple and town council as to what should happen with that as legally.
Right. Yeah, if you look at, if you were in the field and you were to look at it, you would not expect the boundary of, of Grove Street or the right-of-way of Grove Street to be taking the angle that it does, but that mathematically, that's where it is. The hedges, the way everyone's using the property, they're using it just the way. Um, it looks as though that that landing is not in the right-of-way, but it clearly is.
So we need to get that cleared up.
Understood.
And, uh, maybe a happy ending would be that the town would, uh, give you that tri, that triangular piece that would allow Grove Street to be more of a consistent width and, um, allow you to, you know-
Yeah, we could correct the right-of-way limit, sure.
We'll see what those, the, who have that authority, uh, think is, is best for you and, and for the town. I don't have a problem with it either way. But, um, 'cause it is a, uh, you know, it's an adaptive reuse. We got, we have to work with what we have. Um, Mr. Mills?
Thank you. So, um, I wasn't here last time, but like I said, I did listen to the tape. I used to live over in Fayetteville, uh, right behind Mr. Cleary. Great neighbor. I hope he says the same about me. So, um, we were there quite a number of years, so the Fayetteville Hall and Fayetteville in general is dear to my heart, even though I don't live there anymore. So, uh, your idea of what you wanna do there, I think, is, uh, very unique and ingenious and I think would be pretty cool. Uh, I'd be, look forward to actually going to an auction there sometime. That would be a, a, a unique thing to have here in the town. With that said, you know, we still gotta do our job here in the planning board and a couple of questions. Um, and as you know, I sit on the, the CPC as well. Recently reappointed as chairman, so a couple of questions, I'll get to the exterior, uh, in a minute. So the lights, I know there was a lot of talk last time about lights and everything and, am I correct that this, uh, what I'm looking at is two of two is the lighting plan that we have tonight?
That's correct. Yep, the lower left is the, uh, the foot, the foot candles and then the two fixtures that we're proposing to use.
Okay, so in terms, and I know a sign, we don't know the name yet or anything like that, but where a sign would go, do we, is that gonna be lit?
We, we put, uh, is the sign gonna be lit? We did not call out for that to be lit.
So I think, you know, those are things that we, doesn't have to be answered tonight, but those are things that we always look for because depending on the angle of the light, we wanna make sure no one going down the streets distracted and things like that. So not that it has to be finalized today, but, you know, those are things that I'll be looking for is to make sure that the lighting doesn't point in someone's house, my old neighbor's house specifically. Because I'm sure I would hear about it. Um, I'm just kidding.
That's very much why we use this fixture.
No, I, I know.
You can't see the candle.
It's the same thing, though, that we, we talk with any applicant, as we go, as you know. So that'd be one thing. The other thing, um, not that, I, I wouldn't think that this would be period appropriate. So I don't want you to think I'm, uh, asking a naive question, but I assume the fountain wouldn't be lit, right? I mean, a lot of people do do that.
No, the fountain that was there, if you look, um, there's several of them out there. There's one in, for instance, there's one in Rentham, uh, in their town square there. Uh, there's one right in Westboro by the Rotary. That was what was there. The, for some reason, they cast a bunch of those and they put them in town squares around the turn of the century. And, um, every now and then, one pops up for auction. I've seen them at auctions and, uh, so, but they were cast specifically for that. I don't know why that style, but if you look, if next time you drive through Westboro, it's, I think there's this painted green, kind of a light green. That's the fountain that was there. Whether I can actually get that fountain, I don't know. I tried to get it to some, but to answer your question, no, it would not be lit.
And again, I'd be concerned of like a distraction coming down at night or anything. Now, the flagpole too, so-
Yeah, the flagpole has to be lit because i- i- if you're gonna leave the flag up twenty-four hours, which I would like to do, you know, um, it's important to me to have it lit.
Right.
And, uh, you know, my son's in the military today and, uh, you know, on the A-ten's on the Air Force and, and, uh, I'm a military family, so, you know, it's important to me.
Thank him for his service, by all means. Um, yeah, so again, for the lighting plan, how that's gonna get lit, the, the flagpole. So the, the other piece, the, uh, exterior of the building, um, when it comes to restoring, restoration, again, from a CPC standpoint, and, and there were a couple of times that this was being brought up to, to come to the CPC and we, we would, um, the historical, uh, historical commission would always look for getting back to as original as possible. And I heard on the, on the video before that you, you were looking to use Aztec molding.
Well, the, in certain areas, you'd use the AZAC, uh,
AZAC, that's right.
Moldings. In other areas, you'd use some wood. The trimble will be white, most, you know, it's what I'm planning. Uh, the shingles, I'm, I'm looking at Alaskan cedar is what I think would be the best. Uh, which is a very white cedar, very durable and, and can be kept that color. So it doesn't, you know, tarnish like you see down the cape when it turns silver. So I'd like to keep that look. And then the roof would be, what I proposed was a slate-lined shingle, which looks like slate, but it's actually asphalt.
And what was it originally? It looked like cedar?
It was probably cedar, yeah. But cedar roofs in New England are a nightmare. And I don't, I've done them. I did, you know, I've done historical renovations. I, I, I manage a cedar roof. I'm a trustee at the Wayside Inn. We replace it every fifteen years. So we've already, in the time I've been there, we've put two roofs on. So it's red, with the ice and everything else, it just is not practical. That's why, you know, you don't see a lot of cedar roofs.
Yeah. Depending where you go, right? Nantucket, they're all over the place.
Well, if you see in Nantucket, I mean, you know, uh, you know, you're also dealing with, you know, it's a different structure and a, a, a different thing. I mean, I, I have put cedar roofs on.
Yeah.
Um, but you have to be, understand that you're gonna replace that red cedar roof in, in twelve to fifteen years. Um, I would never put it on a commercially used building. If you are in your personal residence, if you can afford that, that's your discretion. And that's what they do in Nantucket. You know, and it could be a code down there. But, you know, I mean, it, uh, you know, I mean, a hamburger's twenty bucks, so that's, people are, people are, are used to spending money in Nantucket.
Yeah. So the, um, so then I, I'm glad Joe's here too. So Joe, I guess my question would be, is the historic commission okay with the Aztec, the plastic or, I don't know, it's not- AZAC, it's not quote "plastic," but it's not wood being put on. I know the windows are already vinyl and that you're gonna replace those and put wood ones in. And, and I just wanna, you know, I'm thinking from a historic, when you look at it, you're gonna be having these, you know, auctions of antiques and everything. You want the building to look appropriate because even on, on Nantucket too, some people have tried to put the Aztec in. But you, you can tell the difference. Maybe not from afar, but would you-
When I'm done.
When you get close, you know, if, if it's not painted, if it's not cocked, you know, the nails start rusting, you can see it. It's, it, there's a difference.
Okay, well, first of all, the correct way to put AZAC, not to get too technical, but the correct way to put AZAC on is put in with screws. And there's little buttons that go over the screw head, so there's no chance of a nail ever weeping. Okay, a lot of guys butcher it and don't do it correctly, but that's the correct way to do it. Secondly, the most likely place the AZAC would be used is on the water table where you get the most interaction with water splash and, and, and bugs and, you know, insects and things of that nature. On the soffits and so forth, it's not as important. But it's very important on the water table.
Okay. So I guess-
So it's a mix.
I guess the question's for Joe, is the historic commission okay with that? Or have they discussed that? I mean, you're gonna need a mic.
I think that whatever John-
Well, introduce yourself, please.
Uh, Joe Hubley, Chairman of the Historical Commission. I think, um, I, I, I don't recall going over the details of the wood as long, I mean, I think the commission is happy with the restoration to make it look as period as possible and not to change the, um, you know, the design of the structure, um, but certainly to rehab it. I know the windows are not original, um, so those will be replaced. The cedar will be, um, is fine with us. We talked about that. I'd have to look at my notes to see what else we talked about. It was, um, but we were okay and, um, uh, with that. And if there's anybody that's gonna do it right, it's, it's gonna be this man. I think that we owe him a, a great, um, uh, set of gratitude for, uh, taking on this project. And when it's done, it's gonna be as beautiful as eighty-four Main Street, as, as everyone can see that's coming along. Beautiful. So I'm excited about, uh, seeing the finished product and I think John will do what, what he needs to do to, um, make it beautiful. And most, and most importantly, is historic as possible without, um, you know, without, um, I guess skimming on it, and doing it, uh, halfway. John, John certainly will do it, uh, the right way. He's the only one that can do it the right way. Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Thank you.
Just so you know, the windows that are gonna be used in this are replica wood windows and it's about twelve hundred bucks a whole. So that, you know, versus the hundred and fifty dollar ones that are in there now.
Yep. Thank you.
Mr. Stein?
Uh, where is the flagpole?
It was, it was building mounted. It's on there, it was on the picture.
It's on the, it's on the, right above the, if you were looking at the building from the, can you, is it possible to put the photograph of the- of the building that's showing the front of the building?
So when you say the flagpole is going to be lit, do you mean you're, you're- So, when you say the flagpole is going to be lit, do you mean you're literally gonna fix a light that's going to shine upwards?
I'd get a micro, I'd like to get a, a small LED, you know, into the soffit there somehow and have it shine up.
Yeah, I would expect something to be up here in the peak. It would bring, it would go up to the light. You, you want it to actually come up into the flag. So, it would be here. I, I don't think it's gonna be that onerous at all. We just, we do need to illuminate the flag. And I, and I know it's very hard to see. We know it's there.
What's missing today altogether.
But, right, today it's gone. You can't go to the new picture. You have to go to the old picture. And it's, you can just see the shadow of it unfortunately, but that's the pole coming off the top gable. There it is. It's just, it's lost in the.
It's faint, but it's there. You know, interesting, during the period when this building was built, I mean, there was a high degree of patriotism, you know, you know, coming off the Spanish-American War, the, just prior to World War One, you know, it was a different era in some ways.
Thank you. It's coming right off the gable, so if you, if you just follow up above the, the pediment above the window, just keep going straight up, you can see the white of the, holding the pole fixed here and then going straight up and the, the flag is just a shadow that's there. It's being lost in the, the sky unfortunately.
So, that would just be one single bulb pointing upward at the flag?
Yeah, I mean, the LEDs, you know, you can get ones that are very, you know, direct and pointed and that's what I was gonna do there. And then you don't have to get up there and change them too often. You know, they last a long time and it's a, actually one of the best inventions they've come out with is on lighting. They're cost effective in the sense of operating them, but they're also, they last forever. I mean, they're, you know, they're coming down in price. But I thought that would be a nice touch and I would put a, I'm gonna actually put a circa 1911 flag up there. So, it's not gonna be today's flag. It's gonna be, you know, have the correct amount of stars.
Sounds good. As far as the hours of operation, and thank you for adding that to the plan, does that, does that coincide with the photometrics? As far as, will the lights effectively turn off?
We could, we could do that, but I'd probably do like a half hour after or an hour, whatever, whatever we thought was appropriate because things don't terminate right at that hour of operation. Someone's gonna stay there later. There could be something going on. I'd rather have the public safety in mind, so I, I'd be fine with putting like an hour after that date, that time.
And obviously, with the exception of the flag light, would you be okay with that in the order of conditions that?
Well, I, I think there should be a light on the front door, you know, dirt, all night long, you know, and on the exit. So, there's some light. It should, the place should not just be dark, you know. As far as the parking lot and all that, yes, I completely agree with you, sir, but, you know, I think there should be some semblance of life in there, you know, that the building is.
Oh, no, agreed.
People would, especially at the entrances where if you were gonna have vandalism or something, you know, people try to break in the door.
Hundred percent agree. I'd just like to be, have these things specified.
Yeah, I think at the doorways, we'd like to have security lighting, let's call it, you know, for, you know, for lack of a, which would be leaving those lights on. Just until, just until sunrise.
Which is with no spill outside.
Right, right. But just until sunrise.
So, on the plan, you indicated remove existing trees for the, the two trees.
Right.
Bookending basically the entryway of the, of the, of the area. But there's a number of other trees on the plan. So, are you removing all existing trees within?
It was just the ones in the front of the building?
Just those two?
Right. And then there's, there's one that's affected by the driveway location here?
Where's that?
Right here. I think probably view that as the one in the front of the building. I mean, I, it.
Well, I was asking if you were removing.
That's being removed. Yep, yep. And then the rest of them are all staying.
And we're adding.
We're adding, right.
Did you see the, the, the letter from Chief Achilles, day of July 25th?
Right, I did see that.
Okay.
So, yep. So, so I don't think he understood how the, the parking lot really worked because currently today, you know, he still can come up Grove Street, but what we're doing is we're preventing anyone from coming back out the inn. So, actually, he has basically free flow access now, which he doesn't have today. So, I'm not sure if they understa, he understood what our proposal is, but you come off of Grove Street, there's a connection with this one-way, you know, travel way. And then when you come in off of Central Street, you can just come to the parking lot. You're not, you're not, you're not gonna come through.
I'm not gonna try and speak for the fire chief. Are, are you going to?
I'll, I'll review it with him further. We got the comment letter. We wanted to get this out. But by the next meeting, we'll have that addressed properly. Make sure, maybe he can do a follow-up memo or something.
I mean, the reality is he has more access with this plan than he does currently.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I think he's better than what he has today.
I see why he'd object to that, but.
You know, one pet peeve of mine is, is tight parking spots.
You don't have it at nine feet. You, you would, if you don't get nine-foot space, I can see you having it, but a nine-foot parking space is really, that's standard. But I, I do know a lot of people do the much smaller. I seen, has Latrell brought up the, you know, the side up the street at the, with the, the medical center, right? You probably have some seven, seven and a half foot spaces. That's a small space.
I see eights everywhere in Melbourne.
But nine-foot spaces is more than enough for, for most vehicles. I mean, even if you have a pickup truck, which I have, you know, a nine-foot space works. But if you get an eight-foot space, it's pretty tight, unless you have a compact car.
I mean, I haven't done the math. If, if we lost a couple of spaces to get them to within the code, so you're not asking for a waiver for something?
No, we wouldn't ask for a waiver.
You could easily just meet the code and make them nine and a half.
We could've. It, it was just important to try to get a good amount of spaces for that time when he has his auction. That's really what we're looking for. We don't want people parking anywhere else.
Well, you know, a space here, two spaces there. Now, you know, I mean, it's, it's, the spaces are precious. I mean, you know, parking to a business like this is like water to a farmer, you know? I mean, the reality is for the most period of time, somebody could probably, you know, they're not gonna be that, that fussy about how they're parking because there not gonna be that many people there. But when you have an event such as an auction there, you want to be able to pack them in there.
So, it's interesting, like, Mr. Morris was talking about the islands, which I agree in principle with Mr. Morris about the appeal of having islands, but I'm actually just more concerned with meeting the code as it's written and, and having less waivers sought for these projects. So, I'm, I'm less inclined to, I, I, and I appreciate your response about just planting more trees in the front. I support that and thank you for that. But if, if at all possible, I would strongly recommend trying to make the, the spaces the correct width, so they're, they're meeting the town code. That's it for me. Thanks.
Mrs. Latrell.
Good evening. Thank you. The, the photometric plan appears to show light trespass, which is not allowed.
We probably only have it in the areas where we put a light at the intersection of the street because we're trying to illuminate that area. We, we tried very hard to make sure we had zero everywhere, so I'd go back and look, but I'm almost certain that it's only gonna be there.
Wow.
We added a fixture there.
So, the code is, there shall be no light trespass beyond property boundaries.
The code is written by someone who doesn't understand how to do a lighting design, in my opinion, because you need to have the light, the intersection illuminated where I'm coming in off of the street. So, if you're telling me not to have any light there, I'm, I'm defeating the purpose of having the light in general because I'm trying to make the intersection of my driveway safe. It's, it just doesn't make sense. So, I'll ask for a waiver. And if you don't want to grant the waiver, then I won't do it and it'll be the board's decision. And if there's an issue at the intersection because of someone not being able to see, I, I can't overcome it. I'm, I'm gonna do the right thing as a designer and if it doesn't work, then I'll ask for a waiver. And if it doesn't, I can't get the waiver, then I, I don't know what else to do. But there is, there is some trespass right there at that intersection because of where that fixture is.
So, we're, we're empowered on, at the planning board by the town bylaw.
Yeah, I, I get it.
Majority of the legislative body votes in.
Voted it because someone told them that was a good idea.
For whatever reason, whether you agree or disagree.
I understand.
For me to just waive things here and there, I want more parking spaces, I want light here, doesn't sit well with me.
All right. I'll, we, we can, we can use different photometrics in the light. I'll just tell them to tighten it up some more and we'll, we'll get it to go to zero.
And how many lumens are the light? We're trying to reduce blue light.
Oh, no, this is warm. Oh, no, I, I was brought up at the last meeting, so 3,000 Kelvin is what the light fixture is.
Okay. Cause the, the specs show like 4,300 or 4,400.
I'll go back and look again. We, I spoke with the lighting company about it, so.
And there, there's no spec, I understand now why, because it's a historic fixture, but on the A1, there's no specs on that.
Yeah. I didn't, he didn't have anything. I got a picture just so you knew exactly what I was gonna put there.
How tall is it?
You know, 1910. I don't think the company's probably around anymore that made it.
It's about 11 feet tall.
11 feet, okay.
We did, we did our best to try to emulate what it would do and be. I mean, that's probably giving me most of my trespass in that area. I, I, it's a different kind of light. I just, I hate to not be able to put it in, honestly.
That's what was there, something similar to that in that area.
Well, that's why I said, now I understand why there are no specs, cause it's a historic light.
Right.
The approved septic plan shows a rain garden. Is there gonna be a rain garden?
So, so again, we got our approval from the Board of Health before we finished with, well, we, Mimi, the first plan was a really good plan, but unfortunately, we didn't meet all the requirements and Boston O'Neill was, you know, we struggled. We, we spent a lot of time doing things that we thought would be period details, do things the way it would have been had Fayetteville Hall stayed the way it was when it was originally constructed, but it didn't. And then the regulations are just not written for us to do anything practical anymore. So, unfortunately, we had to do a conventional parking lot. That's what you see here. And we had to do a conventional extended detention basin with sediment trap four bays and a, and a treatment system. Like you, you, you know, you didn't want to waive that, you would be uncomfortable making certain waivers. The Boston O'Neill was unwilling to see anything but what met the code and we was kinda stuck with the Conservation Commission looking at it, trying to be as cooperative as they could, but just finding there was just no room. So, we gave up. We probably had two meetings, you know, struggling with how to get there and it just didn't work. And we knew we still had to come here, so we, we kinda gave up. So, yes, the Board of Health plan was prior to where we are, but the septic design, the septic system itself doesn't change.
Okay.
So, all of the appearances, everything we designed for it have not changed at all. They still comply with code and my plan's still good.
All right. The handicap ramp, where, where do you enter that?
How do you get into it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so like today, as you know, it comes up the front of the building. We don't want that. So, our handicap parking spaces are here.
Yeah.
And you come up the ramp here.
Oh, okay.
There's a landing here midpoint, so if you follow my plan, we give it exactly the way it is gonna be in the site. You come up, you come up to the midpoint, you come up to the top. The top is here and you turn under the existing overhang on the side of the building.
The, I know you gave us the whole package that went to the Board of Selectmen, but the narrative stating the historical significance of the structure was, there is no narrative. And part of the adaptive use of a historic building, I think we need in our package to explain why this is a historic building.
All right. Honestly, I thought that that John had addressed that, so I'll, I'll try to see what I can find for the history on Fayetteville Hall.
That was addressed by the town. That's how the description was.
I know, and that's what we put in.
They described the building, the history of the building and everything else. That was in the RFP to begin with. My response was fulfilling what they were trying to accomplish.
All right. So, you've been, you've been through that process. Now, you're at the planning board and you're asking for a special permit for adaptive reuse of a historic building. And one of the requirements of that to submit is a narrative stating the historical significance of the structure. If the Board of Selectmen did a good job on the RFP, just copy it and send it to the planning board, but we need that for a part of our package.
Okay.
But my intent was in giving you that, I thought that that was adequately addressed. If it does not appear as though it is, then I will supplement what's there and give you something separate that addresses it. Okay.
Can, John, was that in the proposal or in the RFP?
Well, in the RFP, they described the building.
Okay, cause you gave us the proposal, but it doesn't.
That was my response.
Yeah.
But it's just repetitive. I'm happy to do it. But the RFP said, you know, what the whole Fayetteville Hall history is, what it was used for, the significance, the fact that it was a hospital for World War One vets, the fact that, you know, it had all these different uses over the years and it's something that the neighborhood and the town feels worthy of saving. Obviously, the path of least resistance is just knock the building down, all right? But that's not what the town wants to do.
But maybe it would be helpful if we had a copy.
I mean, otherwise, why would they even have an RFP?
I thought, I thought it was part of that, Karina.
I'll, I'll segment it out and just, and make sure it's complete, that you have a narrative that you've requested. Even if it means, you know, repeating and also expanding on my own words about the history of the building. And I'll work with the Historical Commission as well, so we get it right.
Okay. Onto landscaping. I think it would be helpful if you had the botanical names.
Okay.
And, cause there's a hornbeam there. There are like a million different species. Some are native, some aren't.
It's a European hornbeam.
Okay. So, we, or I prefer native species. Also, in, there were rose bushes listed. It doesn't, they're not listed in there.
It was described. It's a winter, winter rose. It's something John specifically wanted and I'm not familiar with its genesis, so I couldn't tell you.
Are those native roses?
I'm gonna guess they're probably not, but.
Most roses, I, I buy all my roses from a place in a cushnet that grows them and, and to be totally candid with you, I'm not sure what the origin is, but, you know, you know, depending on whether it's a climbing rose or a shrub rose, you know, I'm not gonna put rose or regusa in there. It's, it's a, as far as I'm concerned, it's a weed. So, I want something, you know, appealing.
Something specific that he knows, he knows its habit, so that's why we, we put it there specifically because he knows what it's gonna look like and how it's gonna react and how he can maintain.
Those were in existence in 1910?
The roses, that, oh, yeah, they've, most of them are propagated longer than that. Most of the roses, the big.
No, the one that's that you get in a cushnet.
Oh, yeah, well, that's a place called Roseland. They got thousands of varieties.
Okay, so I want the botanical name.
We'll get some background on that. I don't know.
And in the proposal to the selectmen, you, was listed a perennial flower garden? What's going in that and where's that?
Well, I was gonna add perennials, you know, selectively around, you know, around the, the front and the side, in between like the sidewalks and things. I was gonna, you know, embellish it as I see fit.
So, I'd like to see that on a landscape plan as is required in the bylaw. And I have a question on the sugar maples. For, my understanding is that they're not salt tolerant.
Okay.
Just, it doesn't make sense to make them street trees if they're gonna be dead.
Okay. I'll go back and revisit that. We just, we looked at it and just thought that would be a majestic tree to put there.
I'll talk to my arborist. And see what he thought his thoughts are.
And the, and the bylaw requires two shade trees or three ornamental trees for each 10 parking spaces? So, we're short on trees.
Okay.
Are you talking new trees or can you count the existing trees? In that bylaw, I'm not sure with the.
No, existing trees count.
Existing trees count, okay. So, we'll do an inventory of what's there and, and supplement as appropriate.
And a, it's. And a side and rear landscape buffer to buffer the parking lot?
I mean, we have the railroad to the north. We, we pretty much put the trees where we thought they would be the most impact along Central Street. There are some trees across the back, and there's really little separation today between that and the, our building to the east. But we're gonna put a fence up along that line, because it made the most sense, so.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for now.
Thank you.
Mrs. Houlihan.
Thank you. So I am going to pretty much focus on the photometric plan, which I'm, I apologize, I just really spent time with. I just wanted clarity on the P, the P1. So those are on the parking lot, and just try to understand the height of the, the poles they'll be mounted on, or how they'll be.
Yeah, there's a base, and then they're eighteen feet off the ground.
Oh, that's what, okay. I can't see that.
And then they have an arm, an arm that holds the light, you know, and a finial on top of the pole.
So sort of like your S1 will hold it out like that?
Right.
Okay. And so they'll, they'll obviously have to adjust something to be able to make sure there's none of that trespass on the lighting, as Mimi had mentioned.
Just what I'm afraid is gonna end up happening is I'm probably gonna have to go with more of a shoebox fixture that has the controls inside the light to be able to control where it's going, whereas these, these types of fixtures that were, would have been around at, at the turn of the century, they just don't do that. And that's, that's, that's where I just think this is gonna end up. But that's okay, I'll try. I just don't think I'm gonna find anything that's gonna have that kind of control in the light fixture.
I think what you're seeing, Peter, and the board, is that, you know, historical renovation doesn't necessarily, you're trying to, you know, you, you want historical renovation, you want that period look, but your bylaw doesn't cater to that. It's actually contradictory in a lot of areas, unfortunately, so that's, that's where.
I'll see, I'll see, but I just don't know about the answer to it yet. You just have less control with something that doesn't have that built in, you know, whereas you, for the other project, I've got a regular shoebox that's got controls inside the light fixture, so I can shut it right off on a line if I want to, because I have the ability to control it like that. You just, there's very little control inside that, that can, and that's it.
It's appreciated, but I also would think that we're all here to work together. We all appreciate the work and the effort, and so the collaboration. As Mimi's mentioned, we, we can only work with what the, the bylaws are, so.
I got it.
I understand and appreciate it, but, you know, we're, we're trying to work collaboratively, so.
I think they should take a fresh look at the overlay in this and adjust it, so some of these things could be waived without you worrying about precedent, which is I'm sure what you're probably thinking. So when it comes to historical renovation, that there is liberties that one could take over today's approach.
Acknowledged. I would also say that would be appreciated to evaluate due diligence. Instead of just looking at one, there could be other fixtures that could meet your historical requirements. I haven't been convinced that that diligence has been taken, might have been, but I would like to have the diligence. That's all I'm requesting.
I'm gonna go right back to the company. We use a third party to do this. I mean, we're not doing it ourselves with our computer models. We're using our company to do it, and I'll just find out what's there. And if we can get to where we need to be, fine, and if not, I'll, I'll probably get an explanation from them, so that I can then provide it to you, so that you can make a conscious decision about whether you want to do it that way or the alternative.
I think that would be helpful. I think we learned from the private, the previous people at one-eighteen, one-twenty, Mr. Cox and Vito, even on the landscaping plan, they trusted their partner in landscaping. They had an opportunity to talk to our open space commissioner, Freddie Gillespie, and learned a lot. And so I think that we would also recommend doing the same thing on the landscaping plan. I know your arborist might have opinion, I think we do too, so it would be nice again to work collaboratively. Ultimately, we want a, a town that is holistically approaching our adaptive reuse. That's all I have. Thanks, Mr. Morris.
So I was the first one to pull out the code and read from the code, but I happen to be on the same page with you, John. This is our first adaptive reuse site plan, so we're learning too. And I agree that when we read the code, it seems to contradict some of the areas that we're trying to actually accomplish. And so I guess from my own point of view, and maybe ask the board to think the same way, would be what you just said, basically, that try to find those areas where, you know, we can waive these code requirements for modern site plan in order to accomplish, you know, the, the historic preservation and the historic look. And then in areas where we, you know, we really can't, then we'll try to stay as close as we can to the code. But again, this is our first pass at one of these, and, you know, we certainly have an expert in you here. Not pretending like you, you know what you're doing, but it's obvious that you clearly do, and you know more than all of us put together relative to the materials and the layout and the, the look and the feel. And sometimes it's hard for the board to acknowledge that somebody else in the room is smarter than we are. But I think, in this case, when it comes to the historic preservation pieces, you know, you're certainly teaching us. So I think we should perhaps look at this for waivers in areas that we normally wouldn't for a, a, a regular site plan. So I'll put it up to the public. Any questions or comments? Mr. Calery.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mills, you were a neighbor, and I know you had to move to the lower side of town and leave the upper cross, and we do miss you a lot. You were a great neighbor. Yeah, I have a neighborhood perspective for sure on this project, and as you know, from the last time, I was adamant and very outspoken that it, it needs to proceed. A couple of issues that you brought up tonight, the difficulty you're gonna have in any one of these projects you bring forward with a historic building, especially at the age of this, and what its purpose was, is bringing it into the modern world. Because today, more, when you talk about parking lot lighting and when they should be lit, when the building should be lit, if we haven't woke up in this country about the security issues we're having, I was in the security industry, and I, I don't think anybody should be allowed in a parking lot at all that doesn't have a light on it anymore. So we gotta balance this historic building with this modern world of security we live in. Now, one number two, it was ironic today, I used the Connecticut, I mean, the Charles Riverway, or I used the Hudson Rail Trail to ride on my bike on, and I was down through Milford today to get my miles in. And maybe Freddie Gillespie someday will get one of those in Southborough, hopefully, but going through there to get my extra distance in, I went into their, their senior center area and looked at the parking lot. It was ironic that we mentioned the parking lot tonight. And it's really good, because you whip around on your bike through all these islands. But one thing I noticed is I ran over a piece of asphalt. Those islands work great in Florida. They don't plow snow. And having driven a plow, those are a nightmare, and most of the time, they end up destroyed anyway, or damaged, and there are maintenance issue. Looking at this parking lot, there's not a lot, it's not as big as it really, as you, as you think. But you also, being from the fire department side, now be able to bring a truck in around through the back of that building, Lord forbid, we have a fire in the back of that, have to set up the ladder or a couple of engines in there to make that curve and have something else in the way, I, I think it would be the benefit if we didn't, maybe if you added trees to accomplish that. And maybe we gotta look at that bylaw going down the road, because this is New England. And you go down the parking lots like I do with New England Center for Children, where I work off and on, these things get clobbered, and they're not practical in my viewpoint from Massachusetts, and I think we have to look at that. When you mentioned lighting, this particular building is unique. It's interresidential neighborhood, and probably of the whole Central Street, this is the one that's sure to run probably business, because what's behind it, the Fayetteville AA? There's a couple houses further up my way. The property's a two-family, it's got a barn with it at the corner of Cherry Street, then it's all business up that way. So the lighting, there's really not gonna be a lot of neighborhood affected by lighting, especially with the lighting he's designed to use. I do know how to do lighting, and I understand it. Believe me, I see it every day when it is your wire inspector of the town. Then the issue with the flagpole, the only one that's gonna see that flagpole light at night is maybe a crow flying over. Because if he does it right, and knowing his work, because I see it every, every week, I'm up to his property on, up on Main Street, and it's incredible what's going on in that building. I'm impressed as hell, and not, it takes a lot for me to get that way. So I think that that's a mute issue, and at my viewpoint, if you look at my house in January, towards the pool in the back, you'll see the flagpole. My flag is lit. Any American flag out at night should be lit. This is an opportunity. That was historic. That was part of the building. They didn't have lighting in those days, grant you, but they also probably came to meetings there with either a car that could barely run or rode a horse. In today's world with that building, to bring it into the today's world, we certainly don't have that. And it's, it's gonna be a difficult problem for you guys to deal with, the fact that this is the first you're dealing with, I agree. But if there's any other historic buildings that may go this way down the road, they may not be municipally owned, but people are gonna watch and see what he's going through on this, and are they gonna wanna do this? And my closing part is, I wired a house in the town of Framingham in the Maycomber Estate, and it was a historic house built, I think, seventeen-ninety or eighteen-hundred. Now, when the Historic Society came in and insisted upon saving a lot of the rooms inside, my quote, I said to the woman, "We're gonna have to save all this plaster, we're gonna have to fish wire." Throw my quote in the fireplace, because it's gonna burn. And it basically went five times the cost to rewire that house, and I did it. We were good at it. I used to love doing that type of work. To see this building being preserved like it is, seeing what's going up on Main Street, the way that building is being preserved, this is what I want to see in my town. I'm a fourth generation here. The building that he's restoring on Main Street, my grandfather was a gardener there, so I have family ties to this. And I think that it's important for my neighbors that this building stay like it is. I think if this falls through, and I'm concerned about that, what I've seen proposals that they talked about making a two-family house for low-income housing and all that sort of thing, was nothing like we're gonna be. This is a perfect marriage for the town. Now, I know you have to work through your details, and I'm not casting stones at you for that. But it's important to me as a neighbor, and I think it's important for my neighborhood, seeing what's being bought by the schools and things like that there, that this building be preserved, and this is the guy that's gonna do it. Because there aren't many others who'll step up to do the building like that's gonna be done. I hope I got my point across, and I miss you. You can move back, you know. I may even sell you my house if this doesn't go through.
Now that we have fewer in the house, maybe.
I see there's a few people in the room that grew up in town and will fully understand why James Calery is commonly known as the mayor of Fayetteville.
So I do want to bring one thing to your attention, because this is probably the most important one, especially with a light trespass, is that we did propose to put light fixtures on, on the side of the building here, and the, the part of the building, you know, on the corner here, I'm in the layout. So it's, it's gonna be impossible to do this without not doing it if I'm gonna put a light fixture there. So I just want to be sure that you understand that I'm, I'm gonna go back and try to take care of Ms. Houlihan's comments. I'll look at some alternatives, but at the end of the day, there's gonna have to be some form of rational thought here that, that, you know, we have to do it for a specific reason. I'll get it as narrow as I can, and then we'll probably have the version of what we'd prefer to have. If we can get it, great, and if not, we'll at least get down to something that's approvable, where there'll be zero trespass, but there may just not be a light fixture where we need to have it. So you'll see the alternatives, and you can make the, the better decision.
Just to add to the light fixture discussion, I mean, if you go to the most charming corners of Massachusetts, you'll see lights that are not these modern lights. You go to Beacon Hill, you go to Back Bay, there's plenty of overspill with light, Concord Village in Concord. I mean, you know, that's what it was. So, you know, I understand if you're on Route Nine and you got an apartment building next door, and it's a modern, you know, a structured parking, I mean, that's apples and oranges to this. There's, there's no, there's no comparison. They're building something brand new. I'm just mentioning that because it was brought up, and, and, and I'm glad they're, you know, they're building some, you know, big edifice there, and that's practical, because it's good for the business, and it's on Route Nine, and, and, you know, and they're not, they're not thinking of anything period or whatever, nor should they. That's today. This is a different kettle of fish. That's what I'm trying to say to you. So we're gonna do our best to conform, to put the round peg in the square hole, but there's gonna have to be some give and take to make it work, both sides, which is, I think, what you said, you know, in a different way.
Anyone else from the public? Any questions or comments? So we're, the approval period right now is August thirty-first for the major site plan approval, and for the special permit, it's September thirtieth. So we don't, and we meet again on August twenty-sixth, so we're, we're within the approval period. So I think we're all in agreement that we need to continue the public hearing. And I think that, you know, despite some disagreement or conflicting requirements, we made huge progress, I think, since our last meeting. And this is the type of detail that these, you know, special permits require, and the site plan requires. And you've, you're giving it to us. I mean, the plans, the plans that we have now, you know, we'll see what Fosun O'Neal has to say, but it sounds like a lot of what they'll, they'll say is what we've been saying here tonight, which is, the code says this, and it's up to the board to decide if they, which, which is somewhat of a common comment when what you're proposing still works, but it doesn't meet the code. So. Mr. Mills.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue the public hearing for Forty and Forty-two Central Street, Fayetteville Hall, major site plan approval for August twenty-sixth at seven-twenty PM.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? There was one more thing that I wanted to bring up, and I know that this, it's part of the flexibility here. I know that when I was a kid, and Jimmy's a lot older than me, there were more trees, there were trees on the other side of Central Street along the, where the, basically where the guardrail is now. That used to be, there used to be some big, big trees there. We used to go there and play ball, so, you know, it's possible that you may enhance the streetscape on the other side of the street as part of the package. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? We'll see you on the twenty-sixth.
Thank you.
And the next comment, the next motion. Mr. Mills.
I make a motion that we continue the public hearing for Forty and Forty-two Central Street, Fayetteville Hall, special permit for adaptive reuse for August twenty-sixth at seven-twenty-five PM.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? We'll see you on the twenty-sixth. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mills.
Motion for two-minute recess.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? We'll see you in two minutes.
We'll see you in two minutes.[522.79]
Water that should accumulate along East Main Street would have the ability to take the path of least resistance, which should be down that railroad path, if not down this section from the railroad down to Lamie's parking lot and then accumulating in this area and ponding and then coming out. So that, again, what I was more concerned about is how can this site impact? We did have a very heavy rainfall event in the past period. It may not have been the one that Mr. Morrow experienced that he was describing where he said his basement got flooded, but it was one of those heavy rainstorms recently. We just came out to watch what's the water doing. And it is flowing into the catch basin, but it does pond there because it has a sump that's full of sediment. Again, the water flowed off of this site just fine down the culvert and did discharge from the back of Lamie's without any problem. So that sheet, so Sheet One was revised showing you the details for the existing layout for East Main Street and Newton Street and then the drainage improvements on the left view. For the right view on Sheet Two, we added all the photometrics. We're using a similar light fixture that I just described to you for Fayetteville Hall. That, again, will be located here along the front and rear of the building. Again, if we're going to have the issue about the spillage, I probably can't use that fixture, unfortunately. I really would like to use it because I think it would look really nice on this colonial building. And we are, you know, in a commercial district along East Main Street, but that was the proposal, was to use this fixture coming across the front and the rear of the building. And I'll have to probably give you another alternative fixture that would have a cutoff shield on it, and it's going to be something that's a little bit more commercial looking than something that's more period detail. The pole light, we had given you that the last time. We just didn't have all the numbers for the fixtures, so that's located there. The sign detail, we basically don't know who's going to be here. We're hopeful that we'll have a company identified for it. So we've got a maximum square footage and a maximum height. The zoning district allows that, those numbers. The soil absorption system details, stormwater details, those are, as you had seen in the previous plan. The third sheet is the details, so no change there. There was no change in the architecturals, but we supplemented the package again fully so you had all of the sheets. I did take Karina up on her suggestion, which was to find this plan. This is the improvements project of detail that's available on the town's website. This is that center line and those lines that I had described to you about where the road improvements are. And everything that the town is proposing to do, they can continue to do in the layout. The one thing that the town is not considering, which I would like to try to pursue through DPW and the Selectmen, is to consider putting parking spaces along Newton Street. I think it would not only enhance the opportunity for some business activities in that area, but also to have an effect on coming traffic that is coming down Newton Street to this There's two sheets to that, so one is this color plan, so you can get a good idea of what's going on out there in the layout. And then this plane, you can see a little bit more of the detail of the existing utilities that are there. I would note that there's a conflict with what they located for the structures in front of Mr. Morrow's building here. They have a different layout than what we found in the field. That could just be that maybe someone didn't open it and stick their head down there like I did. Hung my head all the way down into the bottom of it to get an idea where it was going. So I can assure you that what we're showing on our plan is correct. You can see what the changes are in the way they're going to collect the stormwater going forward. And again, nothing that we're proposing on our site is going to impact what the town wants to do there. If anything, I'm open to having an easement so that we can enhance what happens along East Main and Newton Street, so we can do more than what's being proposed. I also provided you with the full-size copy of the soil absorption system that, again, was approved by the Board of Health. You can see their seal on the right-hand side of the plan. And that's pretty much it. I still have those original photos so that we all know that this has been an active corner and that there's been buildings there for, you know, 100 years or so. And unfortunately, there hasn't been a building there for the last 12, 15 years now, and then hopefully we can change that. And then the architectural plans that I had shown you the last time, the rendering. So I'd be happy to go back to those as needed.
Peter, I just want to clarify that those plans that you showed of Main Street, those are concept plans, just so that it's clear.
Concept plans, that's right. I don't know if they call them 25% or sometimes they call them that.
So things...
They're in flux, yeah. They're not full designs.
And Karen indicated that, Karen Galligan indicated some information about Newton Street. The plan on Newton Street is to put a sidewalk on the east side of Newton Street from East Main and include some drainage work. On-street parking will be decided by Board of Selectmen, but those types of things, she's still waiting to get some more information to figure what's going on.
Right. So they show the sidewalk just kind of terminating here and the idea was possibly the sidewalk could go up one of these sides. The east side would be this side. So as long as it goes up, and again, the thought was is that there's no reason why you can't support parking along this section of the street. Again, to not only enhance the ability for patrons to use these other sites and this site for that matter, but also because it does have a calming effect on traffic. When you've got more cars in that area, it will slow the traffic down. So again, that red line, there were lots of, you know, what I call, you know, line items, address this, address that. So we pretty much addressed everything. There was discussion for traffic, so I will give you a separate letter outlining some traffic points. The, you know, everything was itemized. I'm just trying to think if there was anything else that was significant. We did provide a stormwater report in the original package that was not included. There's no peak rate impacts with the stormwater. FAR is within zoning. We added several spot elevations on the grading plan, so you could, she could be assured of where the storm, how the stormwater was going to flow. We incorporated pretty much every comment that Fussin' O'Neill asked for. We added the detail to bring it up. Probably, again, the most impactful thing that we're going to have is the photometric. And again, I'm going to take the same approach. I will show you what this light fixture will do that we're proposing, what an alternative light fixture can do. And hopefully, there's something out there that will, you know, look similar to that but give us the photometrics that we have. And if it doesn't, then I will explain why I would ask you to consider a waiver. And if you can't support it, then I will either go with nothing or I'll go with the other alternative that may not be as aesthetically pleasing. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So again, this submittal was late, similar to the way we handled the previous project. So is the board okay with, again, we listened to the presentation, having us ask questions, make comments, open it up to the public? It does seem that the level of detail that we need for tonight for this project may not be at the same level of detail that we did for Central Street. So let's see where that takes us. Mr. Mills?
Thank you. And again, oh, we didn't do it at the beginning of this, but through the Mullins, I did, no, it was my...
I was hoping you would sit in, so not a problem.
I did read, oh, sorry, not read. I watched the tape from the last time, so the Mullins, I did complete that, so I can sit in on this. And I appreciate you saying that I wish, that you wished that I was at the last meeting. So it made me feel wanted.
Okay.
So proof that I listened. I was just saying...
I did say that at the last meeting, though.
So the water issues before, because I know Mr. Morrow was talking about it and everything, and I believe you touched on that, probably explained it better than I can understand, but just so I can recap what I think I heard. So you're saying there's a catch basin, two of them. One of them's completely blocked with sediment that actually discharged, is designed to discharge behind the insurance agency and then trickle down probably to the, I assume goes into the wetlands that goes eventually down the reservoir.
Yeah, so it would go all the way to the reservoir, basically. But if you came back, it would come across White Bagley. You'd keep working your way up through the senior housing center, keep working your way up the railroad, basically, a lot behind Falcone, behind the old Bars building, and then you're at Lamie's.
So, and I think what you're saying is if that's cleaned out, that's the way it was designed, that it should flow that way, but also...
This section is fine. This catch basin is full of sediment, but it's operational. The water does come into it and leave. What I'm seeing having trouble is this base, this catch basin that's right in front of Mr. Morrow's building is compromised.
And then the other piece, the sign, I appreciate the graphic and everything. Where do you think that's going to go?
That was up here at the back end of the site, and then we showed on the perspective the building-mounted sign. There's a certain square footage that you can have.
And I assume that when you do the photometric, you're going to show that the sign being lit?
Yes, it was not lit in the original analysis. I probably would want to illuminate it. We just didn't have time.
Just when you do the plan, so we don't have to go through it.
Yeah, I understood. Thank you.
And then the piece you said, the parking in town, I know that there was a to-do item that I think, Karina, you were going to talk to Karen, or we're going to go through the Selectmen to see if we could get an idea if Karen was working on possibly parking on Newton Street, right?
That's what we'd like to see happen. The layout's plenty wide enough to support it.
Is that meeting, I heard you say earlier tonight, though, just a couple minutes ago, it sounded like the town had no plans. So have you met with Karen and had that discussion?
No.
Okay, so that hasn't happened.
Karina had reached out. She said, you know, there are these plans, because I had, at the last meeting, I had actually stated that I had put a request in to get the engineering details for that intersection, but I hadn't received anything. And I thought that they had advanced further than what was available, but Karina had said this is on the website, so I got that information. And I incorporated, and then we went out and did a field survey so that we could incorporate those other details that we could see on the ground into our plan.
So what happened is the last meeting, Don, asked about integrating the project.
Right.
So I was going to research, and Peter was, I looked up and I found some drawings, so I called Peter and said, "Look here." And then I emailed Karen as well, asking her some feedback on it. And she said that the railroad is still, they're still waiting for feedback on the railroad before they can do anything solid for a design there. That's why I pointed out these were concept plans that Peter was discussing from Main Street. Concept is pre even 25% usually. So, but she did say that the plan on Newton Street is to put a sidewalk on the east side of Newton Street from East Main to the medical center. The work on both projects includes drainage. On-street parking is a Board of Selectmen decision because they're the road commissioners. But it was still pending. She's still waiting to get more information.
So are we still looking to have a meeting with Karen to find out about the parking? I guess that's my question.
I'm still wait, I didn't think there was a meeting. If Peter scheduled a meeting, I'm just corresponding with Karen for feedback so we know what her approach is. I don't think there was supposed to be a meeting with Karen.
I thought there was going to be a request.
Yeah.
That we were going to put to the Selectmen, asking them to have Karen meet with Peter to join them.
Oh, I didn't get that. I don't remember that, but we can do that. But I think Peter was going to try and meet with Karen about, you mean at a Board of Selectmen meeting?
Not at a Board of Selectmen meeting.
Just an independent meeting.
Mr. Morrow said that Karen reports to the Selectmen, so we have no authority over her. So we have to put the request into the Selectmen, asking them, will you please ask Karen to meet with Peter to join these?
Right. So, yeah, and to cut to the chase to all of that, so we, in the two weeks, so we got the Fussin' O'Neill comments. We wanted to get as much as we could onto the plan to address it. Get this in for tonight's meeting. I figured I'd meet with you this evening, present what I could, so thank you for letting me do that. Then I would meet with Karen, just individually engineer to DPW Director, and then probably see if I can get on the next Board of Selectmen's meeting so I can at least broach the subject of what we'd like to do, but keep this process moving. Because what I'm basically saying is the layout's big enough for this project to go forward the way it's planned, because we're doing everything within our own boundary, but then support what happens outside the boundary. So if there's a way that the town can enhance what they're doing, but they don't have an easement, well, we'd certainly grant the easement to do it. You follow me?
And then your comment about that if there was on-street parking on that side, that it would have a calming effect on everything coming down.
I do feel as though it would.
Is that your opinion, or did you have a traffic expert?
I have a traffic expert who's going to help me with that, yes.
But they haven't looked at it yet?
No, I expected to have that memo back, but the both, this one and the previous one was what they were supposed to be weighing in on.
But my, and I'm not an expert, but I would think too, just the fact that the building's there now would have a calming effect too, because you can't, you wouldn't have a clear line of sight to see if you can run that turn. So that alone is going to have a calming effect.
Correct, correct.
Personally, from a safety concern, I'd be worried about cars, depending on if they made any, I don't know how white it is there, I've never parked there, but, you know, people running over to the bank or anything, not in the crosswalk. I think, you know, I'm not a big fan of like just lining up on the street, but if Karen's open to doing it and they make it official, so be it. But from a practical standpoint and on safety that we have to look at too, I'd be a little concerned on that aspect unless it was clearly designated and marked off. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, no, no, if we were to do parking there, I would want to definitely put the line work in to support the spaces. It wouldn't just be something that wasn't formalized.
Mr. Stein?
So pursuant to Mr. Mills's questions regarding Karen Galligan's involvement, I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, what we had also discussed was asking for Karen's opinion on the drainage. And thank you for adding the detail regarding drainage to your plan. We do have a butters concerned with the drainage situation. I would feel it's appropriate to also get Karen's response, especially in light of Mr. Bemis's points tonight regarding the sediment in the catch basins, et cetera. To me, I understand that you don't necessarily have it as your preference, this project is somehow tied to infrastructure issues surrounding your site. But from my perspective on, as a planning board member, unfortunately, it is sort of tied to it, with all due respect. So I would like to add, in addition to Mr. Mills's question regarding parking, that the DPW superintendent commented on the drainage and how this project relates to the drainage problems or concerns in the area. And I haven't really had a chance to go through these 30 points in your response to Fussin' O'Neill, so I just reserve the right to revisit those at the next meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I just clarify one thing based on what Jesse's saying? As I read Karen's email to me, she said, "We have two projects right there, downtown and Newton Street." So there's actually two projects. The plans for the two projects aren't integrated yet, but they'll bid out as one, but they started as two separate thought projects. And they're waiting for the railroad approval for that. So just so you know, I just want to make sure it was clear because it just dawned on me too, there's two projects that were there.
Yeah, I saw two plans. I only showed you, the print that I showed you is the one east of the railroad, if you will, so it's East Main and Newton. There was another one that brought it back to Park. I'm not just, I didn't show it because it has nothing to do with this project, so, but it is available, it's at the website, and I don't know how it's bifurcated.
That's a different project. That's the tip project. That's actually Main Street reconstruction that's happening now, which ends very close to the west side of the railroad. Then there's the town portion of Main Street that the town is doing with...
Right, that's what I'm saying. That plant, the plan set was a number of sheets. I only pulled out the one that was applicable to my site. There is another plan as you go further west on Main Street.
Okay, I think there's another plan for Newton Street as well.
Oh, and there could very well be, okay.
That's what I'm saying.
So Karina, what are you referring to on Newton Street?
According to Karen, she indicated that there are two plans. There's the downtown section close to the, on the right side of the railroad tracks that the town is doing. Not the one that's happening right now, but it will continue from that one. And then there appears to be a project culminating on Newton Street that's going to tie into the town's portion of Main Street, all right there at the intersection.
So the Newton Street project is something that's going to be submitted by another private individual, or...
I don't know. That's what I'm trying to get information on, and it's coming, it's coming. Yeah, I have an email, but where, I'm just waiting for more response on that. So, and that's what ties in the sidewalk on Newton Street. That's what I'm just getting to. There's actually three, okay.
Mrs. Littrell?
Hello again, Mr. Bemis.
Yes, good evening.
On the photometric plan in the front, like on all three sides, you have the light going out to zero, but it stops on the front?
Right. Because that's how he cut it off when he sent it to me. So that's why I said I'm confident that even though you don't see what's here, the numbers are going to keep going out to zero somewhere beyond the line. I'm not disagreeing.
Okay.
That's how we received the document from the designer.
It's hard to jump in, Mimi, but are you saying that this is going to be revised?
I'm going to have, yeah, I have no choice. But we, like I said to you, it was the same fixture. We used exactly the same fixture I'd used for John's project here.
Some of the comments, same comments I had before, the botanical names on the trees, the dogwood is, you know, they're...
No, we added them. I mean, it's the flowering dogwood is the native, so that's why we selected it.
Well, there are many flowering dogwoods. That's why I was asking for the botanical name. There's like Japanese flowering dogwoods, and so I'm looking for the botanical names. That's the only way to know exactly what we're looking at.
Okay, all right, I'll add it.
Oh, and the same on the sugar maples, especially in the, that 10-foot strip. I'm not sure if that's, and I'm not a landscape architect, but I'm not sure if that's enough room for a tree that size, because I know there's been some areas in town where the trees were planted between sidewalks and the streets, and their roots have come out and like buckled the street and the sidewalks. So I don't know if that's enough room there for them. And also, the sugar maples, I don't think are salt tolerant, and that's the snow storage area, so that may not be a good combination.
Okay.
And are there perennials being planted?
Yeah, we had a perennial in front of the building. Oh, it's actually on the, excuse me.
And what are those? Are those natives?
I just, we just, the request was, "What are you doing across the front of the building?" And I wanted to add some color, so we just picked perennials. I'll just say native perennials, and that's what'll get planted. I mean, if you want me to specifically say how many of this and how many of that, I'll do it. All right, I'll do it.
Well, that's what we've seen from every other submission.
Okay. I just didn't want it to be, it wasn't going to be grass right up to the edge of the building. That's what we want, that's what we were trying to say.
And that's all I have for now, thanks.
Mrs. Holahan?
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Bemis. So I just wanted to clarify, and again, I'm kind of on, I'm a little concerned around this whole stormwater management. And so you had mentioned when you pulled the plans that the town, what you've seen, has a different plan on how stormwater is managed. So I just wanted to clarify what you said about that.
Yep. So what we found was that the surveyor connected a pipe from one basin to a manhole, but it was really from basin to basin, and then it went out. So they just had the wrong location for the pipe that goes through the Lamie property, and they didn't show the whole thing. So we just went out to do it so I could complete the picture.
No, I appreciate it.
Because I was concerned that, you know, a statement was being made, and I thought I knew the answer, but I didn't have anything on a piece of paper that gave the answer. Now I do, so I can stand here and be assured of the position that I'm taking with it. And I don't, I didn't want to do that blindly.
No, thank you. I appreciate it.
I'd be very sure.
Thanks for lifting up the catch basins and noticing that they're filled with sentiment. So I, sediment, that's what I meant. I wrote sentiment, and I know that's not what I wanted to say.
They are full of sediment.
Yeah, sediment. So, you know, you offered to share pictures, so I would actually...
I could email them.
Yeah, I know you said they weren't that great, but I would appreciate that.
Should've just brought them, sorry.
So I kind of, as other members have mentioned, I think it's important that we understand how the town is managing this, because it's, you know, for anything that we do down here and implications on, be period. So I just, the follow-up would be really important. I would also mention that I know we're waiting Fussin' O'Neill's response, so I would also like to reserve comments for another time. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me present tonight.
So again, this is Village Business District, special permit. These type of details seem like we're drilling down, but that's what we do for Village Business District, special permits. We also, even though there's one Village Business District section of the code that applies to the four villages, one size doesn't fit all. And again, the board has quite a bit of latitude as far as requesting things like, you know, even the type of light fixture, spacing and all that stuff. So it's a little bit different than, well, it's actually quite a bit different than a regular site plan outside of the Village Business District. But again, I think we've made some good progress tonight. We were, Mr. Mills was, I asked him while Mr. Stein was speaking to look in Google Earth for the other light fixtures, exterior light fixtures downtown. There's two on the roof of Morrow's Cafe that point to the sign. There's a couple of lantern fixtures on the brick columns between the sections of the pizza place. They look like, you know, the Black Lantern looking. And there's one on Lamie's Building over on Boston Road. So, and I think, if I'm right, if I'm thinking right, that this is really the first new building constructed, proposed to be constructed in downtown since the Morrow Savings Bank, which was at least 40 years ago. So back then, not sure if the Morrow Savings Bank even went through a site plan, because there used to be a home there. And it was torn down, and then the bank was built. Steve, you might be able to help with more of a memory on that than me. But it was quite a while ago, and of course, the zoning, the Village Business District didn't exist. So this is similar to the previous proposal, which was really our first experience with the historic reuse. This is our first new project in this village district. It's not, we've had them in other districts, in the other districts, the Walgreens in Fayetteville and the new building where the blacksmith shop used to be down in Corderville. and the, um, the new building where the blacksmith shop used to be, uh, down in, uh, Corderville. And, um, each of those have, uh, quite a bit, or both of those have quite a bit of, um, variation from the, uh, setback requirements, uh, parking. So there was quite a bit of flexibility, uh, and compromise in those projects. And since they've been built, I don't think I've ever heard anybody complaining about either of those in those villages. So hopefully we'll get to that point with this project, but, uh, understanding that we, you know, we need, we need to have, uh, quite a bit of detail so that we know what we're approving, and what you know is approved, and then you can press, press on. And again, with the coordination with Newton Street, it just seems, I'm not sure, maybe we'll ask the town planner to, to recheck with Karen. She says a sidewalk on the east side of Newton Street connecting to the medical building, but the medical building's on the west side.
I know.
So, uh.
That's why we thought it would be on our side, so that's why I said I'd like to support it and coordinate with it, but, you know, if she wants to put it on the other side, then I, you know, I'm not gonna say you don't have to, but.
Well, it might be worth a discussion.
Yeah, well, maybe we could get it to move.
Yeah, and then, um, as far as the selectman making a decision about on-street parking there, uh, that has no effect on what you wanna do.
I'm trying to enhance what we do here, honestly, I, 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 Mr. Morrow, like, I've had people approaching me, wanting, we want a restaurant there, he's got a restaurant, why do I wanna see a restaurant go here when he's got one? I'm just saying, it's, it's opportunity.
Parking spaces.
Yeah, but I'm saying.
So if the selectmen decide not to make a decision.
Yeah, that would be disappointing.
You can, you can press on.
Oh, it doesn't have anything to do with it, I just wanna have park, parking that would help his business, help Lamie's, help the bank, I mean, I want everyone to prosper.
I'm just trying to coordinate the, the other jurisdictions' action.
It, it's not contingent on our project, right.
Time-wise, relative to this project.
If they said no, it wouldn't matter.
And then if, if there's insufficient detail on, um, the width of the proposed new road or the sidewalk, or the curbing and the radius, if they're gonna move the pavement, uh, tighten it up, it doesn't affect what you wanna build.
No, no, the, the.
It'd be nice to be fully coordinated.
Correct, correct, yeah, the town improvements need, need to stay in the layout, I'm not affecting the layout.
Right.
I'm, I'm, if anything, I'm willing to accommodate what the town wants to do with the property, so that we can do it together. I mean, assure that the grades that we're proposing will work with what the town would need to do.
Yes, that's.
That's, that's right.
Exactly what we, we should strive for.
Yeah.
But in fairness to, you know, the DPW, uh, if they just don't have that information, then we'll just do the best we can without it.
Yeah, if anything, I, I would be putting in, in place something that would support and work with it. I'd build the grade up enough so that I knew that we could make it work, or I'd put the grade low enough so that I knew it could work, and they would come to meet the grade that we had. So, no, no matter what, it's, it can be a line influx if they don't get there. I just, what I didn't wanna have happen was that I would be stuck to being tied to a town project that, who knows what the timeline is on it. Um, like, you know, I have someone interested in this property, I'd like to try to put that together, and by getting an approval from this board, is imperative of being able to do that. Um, you know.
So, back to the building, there's no, uh, uh, basement?
Uh, there, there's gonna be some, some basement, just for mechanical space, but not, not, not full height, it would be a crawl space.
Could you, oh, it's crawl space, could you just, if you know, have, have that shown on, on one of the plans?
Okay, it's, it's basically gonna be that footprint, but we're gonna have, have to have access for HVAC systems and whatnot, and electrical and mechanical systems.
So it's not, so no portion of the building would be a slab or grade?
It would be suspended slabs, right.
And then.
Flooring, I mean, that's what, it's gonna be, this is more or less a big house.
And then the roof, there, there's, there'll be an attic?
There's a third-floor walk-up, yes, so there'll be eaves?
Would that be usable space?
No, mechanical space. So HVAC systems, things like that, electrical?
No, no storage?
No, well, um, small, minor, I mean, it would just be, you know, again, it's crawl space.
Okay. Open up to the public, any questions or comments from the public, Mr. Morrow?
That's Steve Morrow, Morrow's Village Cafe, two Main Street. Just have a couple of concerns and a couple of questions, maybe you can explain how you got your septic system to pass through the code and, and just a little bit of detail of how that all works and where this water is gonna go.
Okay, so the septic system, the soil testing was witnessed by the Board of Health, Paul Pazinski had come out. Um, we do a design that's based upon Title V to the best of our ability, and we received a planning, excuse me, a Board of Health, uh, public hearing, where a number of waivers were granted, the waivers are listed in the center portion of the plan, um, and that's the soil absorption system that's compliant with Title V. And so the, the soil will absorb that water, we tested in the field and confirmed it.
'Cause, I mean, I, I'm downtown often, the groundwater comes up, literally, I have a tight tank in my cafe because it does not leach, it cannot leach. And so I'm kind of concerned how this project is gonna leach when it's right across the street from me.
Alright, so I.
Went from a, from a garage, a two-bay garage, to one bathroom that Ralph would never let anybody use, to now you're gonna have seven hundred and sixty-five gallons a day, is that what it was? Is that, am I correct at that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna go back and forth, so when he asks a question and he's finished, I'll speak.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, so the soil absorption system is based upon the flow of the gas station that was there, and the, uh, other uses that we're able to document. Um, the soil was tested, so the soil has the ability to absorb the daily flow that's being represented on the plan. Um, I don't know about Mr. Morrow's specific location, but I can say that I did test the soil to the north, this would be the east of his building, uh, another abutting property. I found that when I approached the lot line to Mr. Morrow's property, it was all refusal. We had, um, basically about two to two and a half feet of soil, and then it was solid rock. Mr. Morrow has solid rock on his property, in a likelihood, because geology doesn't just change dramatically in a very short distance. So, he doesn't have the soil to support a septic system, that's not my fault, and it's not the fault of anyone, other than back when the building was built, it didn't have the ability to do this, and there's no way to repair it, so the town gave him one option, which was to either probably condemn the building or to put a tight tank in, 'cause that's a Title V provision. In the case of two East Main Street, we followed a procedure that Title V affords, which is to do soil tests on the site, and we documented that there is sufficient soils on this site to support the project, we didn't have any refusal. Um, that's just how geology works, and I can't control that.
And one other concern too is, you said a two-and-a-quarter-story building, or a three-story building on Main Street?
Yeah, the zoning allows a three-story building, we're doing a two-and-a-half-story building specifically, so we just don't exceed, um, mass. That's what we were concerned about, was the mass of the site.
And the setback from the road is ten feet?
That is the zoning requirement.
And because I was under the understanding that crosswalks and whatnot had to meet handicap disability and have different setbacks and different grades to get all of this to flow. Is this gonna, you know, be part of that, have you looked into that at all?
The, the town, if they put a sidewalk in, the sidewalks are gonna be in layout, so we're, we're ten feet off of the back of layout, so that's where the sidewalk would be if the town was to install one. Um, the sidewalks that we are proposing for our site are shown on the plan, and they all comply with ADA compliance.
In, including if you're putting parking spaces there?
Including the parking space, yeah, there's a handicap, uh, van handicap space there.
And then lastly, the drain that you had mentioned that's on the corner of East Main Street near the bank, which by the way, used to be the Barelli property, we used to play wiffleball on there. Um, that drain, from what I understand, has totally failed. The pipe has decayed, it has rotted, um, again, I had seen the highway department there with a sub-pump pumping out a drain and pushing it further down Main Street towards my property. And I just feel as though your runoff, your snow removal, all of that's gonna go down the railroad tracks and rate, dump right into my property.
And, and so again.
And that's why we're concerned.
The, the, the plan does show the catch basin that's in front of the bank, uh, the site plan does show that there's not an invert, because we could not locate it. Um, I can attest that that structure is full of sediment. Um, there's, I don't know what that invert is, if you looked at the town plan, they, uh, did the same thing that we did, they didn't identify an invert to the pipe. Uh, that's located opposite our site, we're not putting any stormwater in that. Um, the crown of Newton Street would prevent the stormwater from our site to go into it. All of our stormwater is gonna go into the back portion of the site, into the drain that I showed, well, I just discussed with you, that has about an eight-foot drop from the midsection of our site to the back of the Lamie property. So there is no hydraulic restriction, uh, nor is there a connection between our site and Mr. Morrow's site, it's just a fact.
When I sit in my cafe and I look out the window during a thunderstorm, and I see water coming down the railroad tracks like a river, I, I find it hard to believe that this is not gonna impact that.
I'm, I'm just going by our findings, I, I went out into the field during that heavy rainstorm, uh, last week, and I did document that there's no water from this site that's going onto Mr. Morrow's property.
You know, again, like Donnie had mentioned, this is the village district in downtown, and I just feel as though a building this size and this proportion will not fit, thank you.
Mary Quirk, eleven East Main Street. Last week, I, I made it clear that what Steve Morrow is saying about the state of drainage on our side of town, and in particular, in front of Marlboro Savings Bank and the railroad tracks, is despicable. And we have no drain left, as Steve just attested, in front of Marlboro Savings Bank. So the water is flowing all the time. I went down last week in the rainstorm, it was all there, it was over towards Steve's, all around the railroad, all off the side. Yeah, the property has been sitting there for a long time, and its former usage was a gas station. This is a really big building, and started out at two-and-a-half stories, now we're, we've got a third story, we've, we've got a basement, and we have no picture or idea of what actually is this. We don't know about the plants, but we don't know what's on the outside of the building, what kind of siding, what kind of roofing. What, what, we're talking about lighting and plants, but what is this? I'm sorry, three-story structure, ten feet from the street, on the corner of Newton and Main Street. I challenge you all to come downtown in the morning and see the craziness of the traffic. See the way people are, see what they do, and then tell me that you're gonna park cars along Newton Street or at the frontier, and we're gonna have water, and we're gonna have all of this, there is no plan, there's no hope for us downtown. We, we've been told that for a really long time. We have a Main Street plan, and it ends at Park Street, right where the businesses are in downtown, right where all the neighborhoods are. I so want Peter to do something wonderful to this piece of property, but we just seem to be losing sight of all the things around it that need to be fixed by our own town and by the state. We need help, our side of South Row needs help, and we need help with water and drainage, end of story. Thank you very much.
Thank you, many of the things that you're talking about are beyond the jurisdiction of the planning board, but I do see that we have a selectman sitting here, uh, hopefully listening, and, uh, maybe taking the message to the, to the Board of Selectmen, it's their jurisdiction. Um, anyone else, questions or comments?
Have you had a licensed site professional do the soil testing for?
Yeah, it's all been done, it's all signed off.
Domination from the gas station.
All completed.
All set, anyone else? Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we continue the public hearing for two East Main Street major site plan approval for August twenty-sixth at eight PM.
Second. Motion's been made in second, any discussion, all in favor? Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we, uh, continue the public hearing for two East Main Street special permit Village Business District for, uh, August twenty-sixth, that's eight oh five PM.
Second. Motion's been made in second, any discussion? Um, one discussion item, Peter, could you, uh, go to the site and put a stake, put something that would be at each of the four corners of the building? If you could do that, then, then the neighbors, the board, the, you know, DPW can get a better picture of what you're proposing, you know, the, the, the corners of the building relative to what's there now in the, in the street, and so on. I think that would help a lot. Motion's been made in second, any discussion, hearing not all in favor, we'll see on the twenty-sixth. Next item on the agenda is, um, discussion, master plan update.
The, uh, Master Plan Committee met on July seventeenth and, uh, discussed the immersion tour that happened in June. They also created, I believe, eleven, um, components within the program to discuss, uh, eleven different items that is included in the master plan. Mimi, maybe you can talk more, there's another meeting coming at August fourteenth.
August, yes, August fourteenth. Um, I wanted to mention, we had a couple of resignations from the committee. Um, both were very active volunteers in town and decided that, um, they couldn't give the Master Plan Committee the time um, that they would like to, and so they decided to step aside. And so I just wanted to thank David Nixon and Marguerite Landry, uh, from the committee for volunteering, and uh, hopefully we'll have other people to appoint.
Anything else on the master plan? Next item is, um, discussion item, vote to support MPC members.
That, that item was on the agenda in case we had somebody interested in joining from, uh, when the two people re, resigned to tonight, so we could at least get someone new on board quickly. So I'd like to just say, um, if anybody in the public is interested in joining, uh, the Master Plan Committee as a member at large, um, that would be great, there's a online citizen activity form that can be filled out. The other vacancy is from the Recreation Commission, and I'm happy to say that, uh, prior to the next planning board meeting, Recreation Commission will be recommending a new representative to the Master Plan Committee.
Very good, thank you. Next item on the agenda is other business properly before the board, planner's report, Karina.
Alright, let me just put this up here now. What you see up on the screen is, um, an upcoming project for the planning board, it's the Saint Mark's School Dormitory. They're going to be building just south of the main building on the east side of Marlboro Road. It will be, uh, it's proposed to be a hundred and thirty-unit, um, student and faculty housing structure. Uh, the intent is that they will submit by August fifteenth to get on the September ninth Planning Board meeting. Um, the Conservation Agent, Melissa Danza, and I met with them a couple times already to go over what we expect to see on the plans and a complete submission, and all the administrative requirements, and um, they've been working with us and keeping us up to date, so I just wanna let you know that's coming down, um, the path.
Mr. Mills?
So I, I'd be curious to know, because, um, when my kids looked at the school, I was told that the school would never have more students than they could fit in the chapel. So, one of my barometers is if the chapel's not expanding, but the dorms are, I assume then that maybe a dorm is gonna be raised.
It's not an expansion, actually, they're moving the students from one area to this new location, so it's not. So it's not adding students, it's relocating them on campus.
And then my question is, what happens to the dorms that they're relocating from?
They told me, but I just can't remember. They said, they, they told me. I have it in my notes in my office. I'll find out for sure. I just cannot remember what they said.
And, and one other thing that I'd, I'd be curious, if the, um, the gazebo that was in front of the old, uh, fire station, um, if they have any plans specific for that, or maybe there would be, uh, maybe we can start advocating that that stay where it is, or something.
Where it is or relocated to the campus, or, you're just saying just stay there?
Stay there, might be a nice little something, if, if possible, but maybe we can start planting that seed.
I can mention that to them. Also, I just wanna point out that if you look on the screen, um, right now you can exit off Marlboro Road, and, which is, uh, on this side over here, and you actually access the rest of the facility by driving through the campus. That's going to stop. Um, they're proposing a, kind of a cul-de-sac turnaround here. Uh, what you see in orange brick, or whatever the surface will be, will be accessible by the fire department and emergency vehicles, but you'll be stopped here to go into the main entrance. If you wanna go to this facility, you have to come in through, um, is that Corda- Cordova? School Street?
School Street.
Yeah, and, and to the parking lot there, which they're expanding right here. So the gray is expanded parking, and they'll be reworking this circle here, making it a stop, so people aren't driving through.
So, my one other, um, item that has a parent of, uh, children have been to schools like this, they might wanna consider having some type of access a little bit closer for move-in and move-out days, uh, especially if it's raining. Nothing worse than lugging three flights of stairs with refrigerators and bedding and luggage, and then have to walk another fifty yards across the grass to your car. Unless they have the football team doing it, then, then it's okay, but they, they might wanna think about having...
Simple, simple access, and if you...
Even if it's temporary for cars to get up? Might be, it'd be, it, it would probably help their donations in the offseason.
Okay, and I have to look, 'cause this scale is pretty small. Um, it may have access there already, based on the orange colors of the plan there, so, well, yeah, I can mention that to them and see what they come up with. Uh, they may have already addressed that. It's just hard to tell on this plan because it's very bird's eye.
Karina, is that an existing building?
Which one?
The one they're, they're revamping to the hundred and thirty rooms?
No, that's the proposed.
It's a brand-new building?
Brand-new building, mhm.
So what's there now, just grass?
Yes.
Okay.
And part of the old orchard. It was an or- it was an orchard over there. Anything else, any other questions? I agree with Mr. Mills as far as the third floor. Seems like no matter what school our kids go to, they wind up living on the third floor.
They like the view.
Next item.
Um, just real quickly, of, uh, at the next planning board meeting on August twenty-sixth, we've invited, um, Destin Heilmann to, um, present and discuss his draft bylaw for the, um, update to the lighting bylaw, to consider the blue light reduction LED. Also, uh, Lucas Environmental will be present to discuss their open space inspections from fiscal year nineteen. Um, we have a draft report. Uh, I also like to say that we have, um, a final draft for the street tree guidelines that were updated from two thousand and ten to two thousand and nineteen. We're looking for a cover photo of some sort so that we can distinguish. We don't wanna use the old one, we wanna distinguish old to the new. So if anyone has any ideas of nice vegetation, something like that, maybe a picture of Breakneck Hill Conservation Area or something like that, any ideas, email me a picture and we'll get that included. Um, there's a draft 5G small cell policy that's been prepared that, um, once you have a chance to look at, we can put that on the agenda so that it can be discussion item for other people to give input. Um, I'm happy to say progress has happened at one forty-four, one fifty-four Turnpike Road. Um, it has been primarily returned. Um, it's been loomed and seeded. Um, we have to look at the detail of the approved site plan to make sure what was there gets put back completely, but, yeah, it's been, it's, it's closed off, it's loomed, it's seeded.
I think there was supposed to be a fence across the entire southern border.
Yep, there are conditions of the original approval that we're still working on getting remedied.
And there were trees there that, that were taken out, too?
Right, so this is a, a, in the right direction. Um, I just have to follow up with, uh, the building commissioner and review the site plan myself to make sure what has to go back there. So that's coming. Um, the AGs, the Attorney General approved the bylaws, um, related to trees from the two thousand and nineteen annual town meeting. So we have a copy of that. They had a couple of comments, but nothing, um, serious about that. Um, Main Street is ongoing work downtown. There are updates occasionally that you can get on the DPW website as to what's happening and what's proposed over the next month or so. Um, as of July twenty-ninth, um, still same work. They're doing the utility poles right now, right in front of the cannon along that portion of Main Street. Um, the road's pretty rough right there, but it's going forward. Things are moving. Um, I just wanna point out that...
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
Just, on the tree bylaw, Don, congratulations. You had a lot to do with that, with the presentation and everything, uh, and it really helped drive that for us, so...
On our way to Tree City.
Thank you.
That's right.
No, I just, I mean, you did a lot for that, so, great job.
And we'll be applying for that, um, this fall. Uh, last thing, announcing the ribbon-cutting of the South Row's new public safety building. A flyer was sent out for October twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen. Public of all ages invited. That's a Saturday. Um, so the flyer is on bulletin boards all over town. Um, it's at the planning board bulletin board. It's on probably on a website. Board of Selectmen. And that's all I have for Planner's Report.
Next item is approval of, uh, meeting minutes from July twenty-second.
I would like to make a motion, um, that the planning board approve the meeting minutes for Monday, July twenty-second at seven PM.
Second for discussion?
Motion's been made in second, and any discussion? Mrs. Latrell?
Yes. Um, line eighty-three. England wetland plants is a great resource for native plants. Should be plant seeds.
Plant seeds, okay.
And one more. Line three eighteen. Um, each group will describe their findings, and I would add, as a starting point for discussion by the committee. Otherwise fabulous, as always.
Thanks for reading them.
Any, uh, other questions? Mr. Stein?
Great job of the minutes.
Oh, thank you.
The quality is excellent.
Thank you.
The detail and the clarity are great. The only thing that I found was on line two sixty, and the only reason, well, it's good to read all the minutes, but this is, in particular, pertains to my question regarding the DPW superintendent participating in, um, in the drainage discussion. So, on line two sixty, Mr. Morris responded that through the, the town planner. The conversation was facilitated.
Attend the future...
Yep, I have a that and a that.
So you want the DPW director to attend a future meeting, right?
I was just asking that if we changed from that to town planner to the town planner.
Yep.
Oh, okay, all right, just making sure, 'cause I can't hear it all.
Any other questions, comments?
Somebody reads them, so there's that.
All in favor? Approved? Abstention. And next item is to announce our next meeting, which is August twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen. Uh, how we doing for attendance on that one? Everybody?
Sixteenth?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, yep.
Mr. Mills?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? We're adjourned.